Hello, good evening. Welcome to this November 4th special meeting of the West Orange Board of Education. Mr. Calabano.
Please stand for the College of Allegiance.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Dr. Cascone.
Thank you, Mr. Alper. Good evening, members of the board. Friends from the Department of Health, Dr. Kelly, our district physician, and of course, all of our community members in attendance tonight. As I hope everyone is well out there and staying safe and positive. As I noted in my letter, which went home to the community on Monday, I'd like to give you the chronology that kind of led us to this evening, tonight. On Friday, I received an email from the West Orange Department of Emergency Management, Office of Emergency Management, which expressed some was requesting the school district to give pause and think twice, if you will, speaking colloquially, as to move forward with our plans to reopen on November 9th. And that was in particular couched within the context of the spiking and rising cases within the township, and the statistics of which I included in the letter. Not five minutes prior to receiving that email, I had a conversation with our district physician. I had actually called him to solicit his perspective because I had been watching the cases. I had been holding them against the State Department of Health's COVID-19 risk matrix. And I spoke to that in terms of, and that document, that risk matrix is a document which is produced by the State Department of Health that is meant to, it's meant for local departments of health to guide and advise local school districts as to what is the most prudent manner in which they should be operating based upon the cases. Low, moderate, medium, high risk. Green, yellow, orange, red. In a moderate level of risk, and if you look at the state numbers, the entire state is now at a moderate level of risk. And thinking to myself, well, that's aggregated by the county, both with townships that have less cases and townships that have more. So if I look specifically at West Orange and the cases we're having, about 200, DOH can correct me if I'm wrong, 200 cases since October 1st. If we were to actually code or designate West Orange, had it in fact moved out of the moderate range of risk and into a higher level of risk. Now, within the moderate level of risk, if you look at that COVID-19 risk matrix, one of the options open to a Department of Health to advise actually is for all virtual, which would explain how the districts, which have already made this decision to go virtual up until a date moving forward, have had the authority to do so. And so I called Dr. Kelly. And speaking transparently, Dr. Kelly said to me, he goes, "It's funny that you called me because I was actually going to call you." And lets you know that I was, you know, and I'm not going to put, you know, I won't speak for him, but to the effect of I was going to call you to discuss this very same matter. And as to the prudence and advisability of commencing the cohort model on November 9th amidst the spike cases. So now I have two data points. I have a local emergency management department, and I have our statutory district physician, who in the course of five minutes have basically given me the same perspective. So you can understand as the superintendent, not a medical person, not a public health person, how it quite frankly, it would have been negligent for me at that point in time to say, "No, that's okay. You know, we're going to do it anyway." So what I did at that point was, is I called a meeting, sorry about that. I called a meeting for that afternoon, 4 o'clock, I met with Dr. Kelly. I met with Michael Fonzino from the local Department of Health. Susan Iavino was on the call. Teresa De novo was not able to attend that day due to a personal matter. But I also had the mayor, Mayor Parisi was on the call, as well as Board President Alper. And, you know, and we had a conversation, and through that conversation, I gleaned a couple of things. One was I was able to gain some real insight into what the situation on the ground was relative to a public health, the public health situation. And two, I was able to get really what I saw at that time as a consensus. Well, let's put it this way. It was either a consensus that this was what I needed to do, or if it was what I decided to do, it was a decision that would be supported. And so when I shared this with the board, I was fairly resolute at that time that this was, it would be very difficult for me as the superintendent now to make a decision that contradicted what I was being told by our district physician and what I was being advised on some level by the Department of Health. And so I oriented the board to this information that same day on Friday. The board considered it seriously. And we ultimately decided collectively that it was important for our community to have an opportunity, for us to be completely transparent, and for our community to have an opportunity to be privy to that same information, to be privy to that same conversation that was had in that closed-door meeting on Friday. And so that's really the purpose of this conversation today, is really to kind of replay that conversation on some level for the benefit of the public. But before we do that, I'd like to just, you know, again, welcome our guests and just ask if they would, you know, each introduce themselves, your name, your position. And that would be appreciated. Michael, you want to start?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. My name is Michael Fonzino. I'm the Chief Registered Environmental Health Specialist with the West Orange Health Department.
Nurse Iavino?
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm Susan Iavino, Senior Public Health Nurse with the West Orange Health Department.
Mr. Nova?
Good evening. I'm Teresa Ginova. I'm the Health Officer for the West Orange Health Department.
And Dr. Kelly?
Hi, I'm Dr. Michael Kelly. I'm the school district physician.
Okay. So just to kind of start the conversation, Mr. Nova, over the course, of course, we're looking at the numbers. You know, we're seeing, you know, as of last week. Can you just kind of talk to us about what you're seeing out there, you know, on the ground level, if you will, boots on the ground, from a public health standpoint with respect to the cases? And anything noteworthy that you and your team have observed in the last several weeks?
Well, we've seen, in the summertime, we had a real lull in cases. Some days zero, maybe one or two. And then beginning late September, early October, cases started to increase within the township. And it was expected, as most health departments were expecting, when more, more social activities were opened up by the governor and more interaction between people, we did expect to have increased cases. Also, there's been a real push for more testing throughout the county. So more testing will also render more positive tests just by virtue of having more testing. So, you know, we are seeing an uptick in the cases that are being followed now. Some of them have to do with people attending events. Some of them are just interactions with other people. I mean, the virus is highly communicable, and which we're trying through our messaging, on our website, and with everybody that we speak to. You know, mask wearing especially indoors, the social distancing, washing your hands, sanitizing. It's very important. And I think, as, you know, other people have said also, that in the summertime, you know, things got a little light and people were enjoying themselves. The shore was open, the beaches were open, and people became a little more lax, I think, in mask wearing and really diligently following, you know, all the things you have to follow that we were doing in the winter because everybody, you know, was frightened and rightly so. So I think that that could also be contributing to some of the cases that we're seeing that, you know. And I think that seeing the cases, it is our hope that people are going to go back to the diligence of the mask wearing and the hand washing and the social distancing and, you know, really consider what their risk is and where they're going now that we're moving indoors.
So, quick question, Mr. Nova. With, you know, that being said, and with the, you know, the onset of the holidays and the likelihood that, you know, from a public health standpoint, do you see that the holiday season and the propensity for people to be convening and gathering as something that's relevant?
Well, yeah, I think that's, you know, it's of concern. I know the governor's talked about it also. It's certainly a concern when people get together. And especially, you know, in large numbers. So it's a concern. I know that some colleges are changing their procedures that, you know, when the students come home for Thanksgiving, they're not going back. They may be doing courses online. And, you know, the whole travel aspect of it, you know, plays into it also. Because we do have travel advisories in a large number of states that have some higher cases also.
Thank you. Nurse Iavino, just, I just want to kind of segue from, you know, and I understand more tests, more positives. But one thing I distinctly remember hearing in our meeting was that, you know, we're seeing a, we're seeing symptomatic illness per capita at a higher rate than we saw earlier. And we are, I shouldn't say we, that medical professionals are seeing a higher rate of hospitalization and ICU admission this round than, not necessarily at the peak, but certainly, you know, during the summer. Is it, can you speak to that? And Dr. Kelly, if you want to follow up with that with your own perspective from, more from the clinical, private practice standpoint?
Thank you, Dr. Cascone. We are definitely seeing a lot of illness, people, more illness than we are just asymptomatic people at this point, unfortunately. And we are seeing a lot of clusters within households. The majority, a lot of whole families are being infected and being symptomatic, which is concerning to all of us as medical professionals and in the public health field. You know, it's a question as we say, why, why now? Why are more people becoming symptomatic than they were previously? That being said, you know, we really need to be diligent in moving forward with some plan. We're seeing, we're seeing a quick uptake in the hospitalizations daily as we conduct our interviews. That's not information we get right away. So you may see a delay in that, you know, tomorrow, someone else may be reported hospitalized that we don't have on the report today because what happens sometimes is once we do the investigation and we're speaking to the individuals, we're finding out, you know, that the data they send us doesn't tell us where they are until we speak with them. So as soon as we get the lab reports, then we're able to really see where people are at. And we are seeing a lot more frequent hospitalizations, not as long, not as sick, thank God, not as many people on ventilators, which is a great thing, but yet still hospitalized, needing additional medical support than they can do at home. And some of these households are multifamily households, and we are seeing clusters. We refer to them as clusters, which means more than one person in the same, identified in the same area as having the illness. We are seeing household clusters and multi-household clusters. So family that's been with their particular family, and they live in the community, but separate. So there may be five people in this house and four people in this house, but they're all related.
Now, Nurse Iavino, I recall in our conversation from Friday, you know, that, you know, you placed a particular relevance on that idea of clustering, you know, and then kind of projecting towards, you know, moving into school. And, you know, I didn't, I don't totally understand why that's, but could you elaborate on why that clustering becomes particularly significant when we start moving back into schools?
When we start to gather in large groups and we begin to get closer in space, spatially, we become closer contacts. And as we look at contacts, household contacts, kind of moving about your everyday business, being in the same classroom together, utilizing the same bathrooms in terms of what you look at in a contact, that risk increases when we put groups of people together. So when we start seeing household members getting sick, a household of five, and we'll have three individuals in the household sick, we have to say, is it, when we gather in larger groups and we're closer together, what is the infective rate? Like, what is, how is the communicability happening with these? How is the virus moving from person to person quickly and how people are getting very sick? When we look at putting large groups into school and where sometimes you're not able to really monitor as closely as you would like to in a controlled environment. Even in controlled environments, we're seeing the spread in someone's home where you're able to do that. So it's concerning to watch the spread in clusters and hope once we get into a school system, concerning again is clusters, clusters in classrooms, clusters amongst teachers. You know, there's a lot of different venues there for clusters to occur.
Thank you, Nurse Iavino. Dr. Kelly, would you offer any corroborative medical perspective as to the increase in symptomatic illness? The significance of the illness?
Yeah, I definitely agree with Susan about we're seeing an increased uptick. Clinically, I'm seeing, it does seem to be spreading faster among close contacts. And people are getting sicker quicker. So what I'm seeing is people are more symptomatic, like Susan had mentioned. I think the reason why we're seeing less mortality in the hospitals is because as medical professionals, we've gotten much better at treating it. We have more tools to use, we have better protocols. So I think we're better at treating it. So we're seeing a lower mortality, but we're seeing more people sick and more spread. It doesn't mean zero mortality. There's still people who are very sick and people are dying. It's a very dangerous situation, but we're better at treating it. My concern, I have many concerns about having, bringing people into our school buildings in close contact at a time when we may be on the uptick of the second wave of the pandemic. And if you go back to history, the last pandemic we had 100 years ago was the second wave that caused the most damage. Now, granted, that was a different virus, but this one seems to spread more than that virus did. It seems to be more contagious. So I think it has the potential to be worse. And that brings me to my reservations about rethinking when we actually open.
Dr. Kelly, and then Susan, one of the other things I heard, which I didn't know until I had the conversation on Friday, was the increase in the number of children, young folks, who are actually contracting the virus. And I'm going to go on a limb here as a layman. While, other than, you know, kind of exceptional cases, the likelihood that a child with a strong immune system will become significantly ill is relatively low. The fact remains is that if larger number of children are contracting the virus, then we have a larger number of young people who then become spreaders of the virus. But can you speak to that in terms of that difference in the trend more recently as it relates to children from past trends that we saw with this?
Sure. I've been looking at the data that we've had since really the end of September, beginning of October. And we've had thus far, and this is just identified cases, not quarantined contacts. We have about 34 school-aged children that have been affected, four of which are not related to multi-household clusters. That shows you what we're seeing in families and what we're seeing happening with these children. Multiple children being sick in the same household. And we really weren't seeing a lot of children affected by it. I think if we remember early on, we were glad that children weren't being affected, you know, when we first started seeing this virus in our country here. But now I'm really, we are seeing, public health-wise, not only here, but in our surrounding communities, we're seeing a lot of children being affected by the virus, being diagnosed, which then makes them a carrier. And if, once they're doing that, if they're not quarantining and if they're not isolating, which is difficult as we know with children, the spread within the households and the spread of the disease and the virus is much more rapid. So it's a great concern that we're seeing these children sick, and they are ill.
Michael, can you, would you mind just telling us, I mean, just, you know, your title? It's got a lot of words in it. Why don't you just, you know, and perhaps as such, you bring a different perspective from an environmental health specialist. Can you speak a little bit about what your role is in the Department of Health and how you, from your role and capacity, view this?
Yeah, so, Dr. Cascone, I mean, basically, I'm basically the head of the Environmental Health Division. So my division is mostly involved in, you know, making sure that the restaurants are complying with the COVID guidelines that are set forth by the State Department of Health for indoor dining, outdoor dining, gatherings of such. So our division is out on a daily basis inspecting restaurants as we normally do. But at the same time, we're looking at these guidelines and making sure that they're being followed by the establishments in town. In addition to that, I'm involved with, you know, helping our health officer oversee the contact tracing operations and getting contact tracers and coordinating different things. So I'm kind of involved in multiple things during the course of any day.
Michael, presently, how would you, with the uptick in cases, how would you characterize, you know, the capacity with contact tracing? And if you could maybe speak a little bit to comparatively to the spring, you know, kind of at what point in time, and maybe Teresa would want to weigh in here as well, at what point in time did it become arguably unmanageable with the number of cases that were coming on a daily basis to be able to contact trace in an expeditious fashion?
Well, I mean, the majority of our cases are being handled by our public health nurses, Susan, and we have one other that are doing the majority of the cases. We do have some contact tracers, you know, that are employed by the State Department of Health, assisting us on weekends and are now just coming into play to assist us during normal business hours. And when we were shut down, you know, our Environmental Health Division was more involved with the contact tracing operations because everything was shut down. So we weren't out inspecting restaurants and looking at things we're looking at now. But being that we are, you know, things have opened up, our division, our environmental division has to be out there doing that. So we are relying more on the contact tracers to assist our public health nurses.
Susan, do you want to talk a little bit about, maybe, you know, thank you, Michael. Susan, do you want to talk a little bit more about the contact tracing piece, just, you know, boots on the ground, you know, as you're getting, you know, 10, 15, at one point, 20 cases on one day? How that goes and how it's going, and at what point in time, you know, if you want to hearken back to the spring in terms of daily cases where it became very difficult? Maybe it didn't, maybe it was manageable throughout. Can you speak a little bit to that?
I think that we have a good team put together. I think the Health Department, we really function as a really good team. And at any time or place when we need assistance, we're always available for each other. So in terms of contact tracing in the beginning, it was all team members on board, and that's how we functioned. And it was great. And then as things started to open up, the reason they opened up is because cases slowed down and we were coming back to some sense of what people would consider normal activity. And now that we're in a spot now where we are utilizing contact tracers from the state, like Michael said, it's working out well for us. The contact tracing process, I don't know if you want me to speak to that, is a long one. It's not a five-second phone conversation. And the contact tracing that's happening here on this end is very in-depth. And that's why we're putting together all of these, any outbreaks that are happening in the community clusters, you know, not to speak to things outside of what we're seeing in the schools. But sometimes we'll see, you know, maybe someone had a family gathering and we see five people from different households related to that. And that's what the contact tracing does, and we're seeing that. And we're putting those pieces together here in our department on the daily. So it's, you've kind of become a little bit of an investigator.
Yeah.
Investigator.
Are you, I mean, you know, we hear about this idea of people not being cooperative with contact tracing. And I'm sure those are probably, in most cases, the exception rather than the rule. But are you seeing some of that where either it's difficult to get a hold of people or people are not necessarily forthright in those interviews?
Sometimes. We definitely do have that type of situation. I'm not one to give up, so I'll try to find you no matter how I can. Especially when it comes to public health, you know, we've been doing this a long time, a lot of, most of us. And we have ways, you know, we're very lucky that the state helps us in getting some phone numbers that we may need and other information that we may need to get to the clients. We have had cooperation of being able to hand-deliver letters to people's homes if they're not answering the phone. So we use a lot of different mechanisms to actually get to the people. That being said, sometimes when you get to people, they're not always cooperative. We can usually get the information we need. Some people are not cooperative. And that's really important for our end to protect you as a community, to give us some cooperation. The information, sometimes we're asking questions that may seem invasive. Where were you? Who were you with? In a roundabout sort of way, sometimes we have to, you know, be a little bit of a negotiator to get some information. But it's important we have that because without that information, we can't investigate the case fully. We can't contract contact trace out the web. So if you're, it helps us with the most information you can give us, it helps us. Let us decide with you whether that person's a close contact. Let us help you, ask you the right questions. But it helps us if you answer them. It's most important for people to cooperate.
All right, thank you, Susan. I just, we're going to, we're going to begin to wrap this up. I just have two more questions. One is for, you know, one, I would pose it to any representative we have here from the Department of Health. So whomever, you know, wishes to answer. And recognizing that that the governor ultimately, from Trenton, makes the decisions as to how we manage our public health on the local level. You know, and just as a quick sidebar, ironically, at the start of this in March, before the governor did close our schools, we were told we couldn't do that until we were directed by the local Department of Health. And now, in some ways, the, you know, the authority of the local Department of Health has been at least tampered to some extent. Let me ask this question. If you had control over, to make local decisions about, you know, your facilities and not schools, let's put schools aside for a second. Let's talk about the other facilities that you have in your town. Based upon what you're seeing with the rise in cases, would you recommend raising the occupancy? occupancy of your restaurants from twenty-five to fifty percent at this time? In other words, at a time of rising cases, would you recommend an increase in occupancy to indoor spaces if you had the authority to do that, recognizing that you don't, because the governor tells you what to do and when to do it, as far as those occupancy requirements?
No, no. At this time, I don't think it would be the time to add more people to indoor dining or stores or, I think it's very important that our retail stores and, you know, food establishments and grocery stores keep up with what they're doing and vigilant as far as, you know, mask-wearing and glove-wearing and, and counting people that are going into their establishments to make sure that there's not too many, and to really just follow the guidelines exactly, because they're there to really try to, to help us and somewhat go about our lives, but being able to do it safely. If it was up to me, I, I realize, and it's a hard thing, because, you know, businesses are hurting, and it's getting colder, and it's harder for them to operate outdoors. But increasing indoors at this time, I don't think would be a thing that I would do if it was under my control.
Thank you, Teresa. And just, just a final question. Dr. Kelly, you know, you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask the question, but before you answer it, I, I would like for you to just share with our attendees, your background, not only the school districts for which you serve as a district physician, but also the specific training that you had as a, you know, as a national, a federal disaster physician, and more specifically, your training in pandemic readiness and response. But the question is, just with that broad perspective of not only as a practicing physician, but also as being a district physician for, it was eight or nine school districts, something in that, something like that, just speak from your perspective in terms of for the districts that have gone back, what you've seen from an operational standpoint relative to quarantines and staff members and students that have necessitated quarantines once students have gone back in?
So briefly, I'm currently a district physician for nine districts, consulting with a handful of other districts, and take care of two universities. I'm also on the National Disaster Medical Assistance Team, which is a team that's specifically designed to be deployed to areas where their local jurisdiction is overwhelmed, like a hospital is overwhelmed and they need to decompress the hospital, or disaster on the ground, you need somebody to set up a medical station, it's kind of like a MASH unit. My training for that has included a number of courses in pandemics, biological attacks, as well as specifically last August isolation and quarantine training, not this past August, the year before, specifically addressing pandemics and emerging infectious diseases that could be a danger to public health. And with that background, I've seen a number of concerning trends over the past, I'd say, two months. Some of the schools that I work with that did open and were very aggressive in opening are, have had to shut down numerous times because of a rapid spread and uptick in cases. And it almost seems to be like a snowball effect. I've seen one district in particular, the, it started out with some of the students were sick, but then the staff got sick, and there, at one point, there was over a hundred teachers that were quarantined, and that adversely affected the operation of the whole district. With this particular situation, I'm just very concerned that we're on the cusp of an emerging second wave that hopefully will be minor, just a minor blip. But if not, it, it concerns me that we're going into the colder weather, we have the holidays coming in, we have an uptick in cases, and we're going to be putting more children into our schools in a situation where I don't think we, we can say with a hundred percent certainty that it's safe. We don't know, because we don't know the numbers. That's why, that prompted me to reach out to you specifically, to say maybe we should hold back, delay specifically until we have more information. You know, if I can, I'd just like to say, I understand the, the sense of urgency to get our kids back to a normal life, and that is important, and we weigh that against the, the safety for the children and for the families and the community. And it's, it's a very, very difficult balancing act, but when in question, I think that the best solution is to err on the side of caution and take a step back, reevaluate, get more data before we move forward. Discretion is the better part of valor.
Thank you, Doctor. I just have, I think that's, that's all the questions I have. You know, at this time, I would just invite board members, if you had any questions for our guests.
Yep. Mr. Rothstein, would you like?
Thank you very much, everyone, for, for talking us through this tonight, really, obviously very difficult and challenging time for everyone, so thank you for making the time here. Just a couple of questions, I think, as I try to grapple with, with everything that's going on and what looks like an increase, certainly an increase in cases in our area and in general, what that impact is going to look like on us. I think the first question that I had, Ms. DeNove, you had mentioned that some of the spreading, some of the cases that you see, I, I think you were referring to the clusters, is caused by attending events. And I was wondering, is that some, is that information that comes out in the contact tracing? Maybe Ms. Yovino can weigh in on that as well? Or is that just something that's, that occurs in general throughout society, and we assume that that's the same thing happening here?
No, it's, it's definitely discovered when we receive the positive case and the laboratory comes into a computer system, and when the nurses question the people that are positive and where they were and who they were in contact with, these things are discovered. And then you might see, you know, one or two other people become positive that attended the same event. So that's how, through the investigation, it's, it's discovered, basically by what, what the residents are telling us. Or discovered through another, another municipality, another health department could contact us, because the event could be held somewhere else, not in West Orange, where a number of people attended. I mean, you know, we investigate the same way for other diseases. You would do that, you know, for a foodborne outbreak or another communicable disease, sexually transmitted diseases. I mean, are all investigated by questioning people and who they were with, and, you know, how close they were in contact, and, and, you know, going back several days to say, you know, who, who, you know, what did you do? Did you go to a wedding? Did you go to a ballgame? Did you, you know, and a lot of times, people, you know, people will reveal that. Sometimes people are reluctant because they think they're going to get someone in trouble that, you know, was hosting the event, or if it was a house party, that's another thing. But it, it is, it comes out through the questioning when the nurses and the contact tracers question the person as to, you know, to backtrack on their whereabouts, or if it becomes something that was related to travel, because we have a travel advisory for a, a good number of states that, you know, when you enter New Jersey, you should be, you know, should quarantine yourself. That's, that's a whole other thing that we're contacted about. But it's definitely through the contact tracing that, that we find things out, or, or if something, you know, comes up on Facebook that somebody sees, that there was a big party, and, you know, so we wait to see, you know, if, who attended that event.
Got it, thank you.
Yeah, I don't know if Susan has anything to add with for that.
Just a few things, that was, Teresa really summed it up for us, but what we'll often do is if I'm investigating a case and someone says they were at a wedding, I'll say, do you mind giving me the bride and groom's information? Where I was at a party, can I have the host's information? And I don't wait till I get the cases, and I call them. I call the person that's hosting the party, the bride or the groom. I literally called the bride and the groom the day they got home from their honeymoon and said, send me your list, send me your guest list. And they did, they complied, and they did. And I was able to disseminate that information back to the state. And the question you have to ask is, is anybody else calling you, telling you they got sick? Because the guests that you're interviewing may not know, I go right to the source, call the, call the host, call the bride and groom, call the mom of the kid's birthday party, call the coach of the team, and say, tell me about what your day looked like when these kids were all together, or when you were at the wedding, or the party or the event, tell me what it looked like so I can see better whom I need to contact and say, hey, listen, this is what we need to do.
Got it, thank you.
You're welcome.
And, and then a question, I, I think really just general, and this is, you know, I think big question, big picture, so I'm not really sure who best to direct it to, but I, I like, I'm sure like many of us have seen information, read different stories that give conflicting information about what's going on and how to interpret all of it. And so it becomes very difficult to really form an opinion that you can feel really solid on. And one of these things has been a, a, a number of pieces that speak to a lack of spreading in some schools that are open, or in many schools that are open, and, and that even though it's possible for children to become ill, that it's less likely and they don't spread as much. And so I'm curious about your opinions about whether you think that there's anything solid to that, or whether you think that that just has to do with the way things were over the summer with lesser cases and more time outdoors, and you expect to see it increasing in schools now, just, and any opinions and guidance you could offer?
I, I think that there's, the term that's been coined now is COVID fatigue, and people are kind of tired of having to pay attention to all the rules, and my kids want to get back to normal. We want to be able to have kids have sports. Is it safe? In my opinion, probably not. Our numbers show that. Is it safe, you know, when children are, when the kids are together and when we are having these cohorts, we don't know where the spread begins. It's probably with the gatherings, and parents want to have their kids together outside of school. So we can control the environment very carefully in the, try to, in the building, what an ideal picture would look like, desks six feet apart, everyone wearing their mask, and then they carpool home, and then they go to a birthday party, and then we have Thanksgiving, and then we have the spread right back in, in the building. The incubation period is fourteen days for this virus. So you may be sick before you, and you don't really even know you're sick. You know, we're having kids that wake up with fevers, and the parents, like, they were perfectly fine going to bed. And I said, what'd they do yesterday? Well, they had a play date. You say, oh, okay, let's talk about that. So that's, that's where it comes in, is, and with the incubation period, you really don't know when this is going to start, or where it begins. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think it, it starts to get to it. I mean, I, I guess I'm not looking for a solid evidence that's going to prove one thing or another, but I think we're, we're getting a picture of, of how easily it spreads and how easily it can be on the increase, especially in circumstances when there's fatigue, as you mentioned, and, you know, and again, I think more indoor activity. Just one more question. Dr. Kelly, you had mentioned that, that in, I think you were referring to the nineteen eighteen, I guess, pandemic, that the second wave proved to be more contagious and worse, and I think deadlier than the first. Can you just sort of briefly explain why that, why that was, and why it could be the case that we could be seeing a more severe second wave here?
Well, I don't think we could say with a hundred percent certainty the exact cause of that, but we do know that the virus, the influenza virus, did mutate and actually became more contagious and spread much more rapid during the second wave. And I think there was an element of fatigue, people trying to, tired of dealing with the rules to try not to get it, but also an element of an overwhelming of our, of the resources. And if you look at some of the older medical textbooks and you see these makeshift hospitals where all the sick patients are inches apart, and they just had nowhere to put them, so that just prompted the spread even more. Then the doctors got sick and the nurses got sick. But it is a concern, and to maybe add on your other question, one thing that I would say is, having the, the opportunity to take care of multiple school districts, I do see exactly what you said. There are some schools that are having a really, really hard time, some that seem to be doing okay. But it almost to me seems like what I'm seeing over the course of two months is, it's just that it's not hitting everybody at the same time. And, you know, there, there's so many variables, the size of the buildings, the ventilation, the population, how, how many kids are in the classroom, there, there's just so many variables that you can't say every district can be compared to another one. But it is concerning that we have some illness in multiple buildings in our district, and children are getting sicker, we're seeing more kids get sick. So that, that combination, along with the uptick, raises some alarms that we may be going into a similar situation than, like we saw in nineteen eighteen pandemic.
All right. Well, thank you all very much.
Okay, Ms. Triggs Gals.
Thank you, Mr. Albert. And thank you to everyone who's come on tonight, all of our experts, we really appreciate you taking the time to not only share the information with the board, but with our community. I'm looking, we've got four hundred participants out there. This is extremely, extremely important. I'm sorry.
Thank you. I was just gonna say. Okay. Ms. Triggs Gals, I'm sorry, can I just make a quick announcement before we start? There are quite a few people that are raising their hand. We will have time for public comment, I just want to make that clear. So we're just letting the board members ask their questions at this time, and we will get to you guys when we go for public comment. Thank you so much.
Okay, so, thank you, Mr. Albert. And just really, as Mr. Rothstein said, want to thank our experts who were with us this evening, and not only sharing the information with the board, but with the community, and I was saying, there are about four hundred people on the meeting tonight. I think, I think my questions, I'm going to gear to you, Dr. Kelly, because you are dealing directly with school districts. Of the nine school districts that you're currently working with, who are open, open in a hybrid model, are any of them comparable in size and age of buildings? Because I think the age of the buildings has a lot to do with how safe things will be for students and staff when they return.
Yes, and unfortunately, there's, some of the ones that are similar age of buildings and size are the ones that were not able to stay open, they had to close down for two weeks at a time because of infection spread. But to answer your question, I, I agree with you that the, the age of the building is a consideration, another variable, effective ventilation and size and et cetera.
Right. And I've heard the term rolling quarantines, where, you know, one school will close for two weeks, and then we'll, through the contact tracing, find out that there was a youngster or youngsters who were visiting that person in that particular school, and now there's the wave, and now other schools close. Are you experiencing that in some of the other school districts as well?
Yes, yeah, that, that is, that's a really good explanation or description of what I'm seeing. And it's, you know, people in similar, close towns and close proximity to each other, there's some overlap and spread between towns and between schools, and then bringing in something Susan brought up before is with the sports. There's, there's some cross-pollination from sports. I will say, because most of the sports are outdoors, I, I think that's a safer environment than having that sort of numbers of people indoors. That outdoors versus indoors is a big difference, because I know some- Cause I know some people are saying, well, how can we have sports and not have our kids in, in classrooms? And I think it has to do with the environment that we're playing sports in. But no sport team is getting by unscathed. Whereas we are seeing kids getting sick and we are seeing people getting quarantined with the sports as well.
When we talk about quarantining, that means that a family has to do that on their honor system, correct? There is no one who's monitoring to make sure that you stay, all the members of your family stay home for 14 days. So even if, um, there's been close contact and it's recommended that someone quarantine or that a family quarantine, there's nothing to say that they will?
Yeah.
That's a, that's a factor.
Yeah, we can't police inside the house. We can only control in the environment where, in our school.
Right. And, um, so I guess, I guess my next question, I'll bounce back to, um, the contact tracing. The more we see the spread, the more contact tracers we will need. So I don't know if that's more back to the health department, um, experts. How we'll be ready to, to step out if we see that the spread is even greater? Will we have enough people to do the contact tracing that would be required?
I would defer to the health department on that question.
Okay, okay. So Ms. Ayavino or, okay.
We do have, we have the ability, as we did in the, in the spring, when we first started, we had the ability to, um, put together our own, we have trained investigators within our own team here in the health department. And we have the advantage of having, the county has contact tracers, which we're using, um, at this point for some assistance and some weekend coverage. So we do have the availability of contact tracers. And as we need them, we can bring in either our own team that we already have, depending upon what's happening with other things being open and operating, you know, restaurants and what have you. And we have the ability to reach out to the, to the county again and request additional support. Right now we're doing very well with the support with, within and with the county that we're being offered now at this point.
Great. So you have the resources, should we, should we need them? Great.
I'll, I'll just add that we, you know, even in the spring during the height of this, we had, um, some volunteers um, that also, um, were able to assist us. So we have, we have a pool of volunteers that we can go to as well. But I, I don't think that we're going to have a problem, um, getting contact tracers as we need them with the county resources from the state.
Great.
And, and just a quick, if I, if I might add in, I wanted to thank Dr. Cascone. From my point of view, we had the opportunity to work with our school nurses that we have a relationship with here in the department. And we had many of the school nurses for the district helping us out, which was tremendous. They were a great asset and they continue to be to us for this, throughout this entire unprecedented pandemic.
Right.
Wanted to give them a, a global thank you.
All right. And I, again, I'd like to, to thank you so much for being here this evening. And I think that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. So I, you know, I echo my peers in thanking, um, Dr. Kelly and folks for joining us tonight. Um, I think I come at this a little bit of a different angle. And let me first preface this with, I don't believe in any way, shape or form that the virus is not real, that it's not out there affecting people. But I do think that maybe some of the information we're hearing tonight is a little bit one sided. And I think we have to take into the fact that there are other perspectives, um, on handling the virus and what our community is doing. Because let's face it, parents are having playdates, parents are utilizing pods because at the end of the day, it's really, um, it's overwhelming for our parents right now. I've had numerous parents call me, they're in tears, they don't know what to do. They're doing, they're spending more time doing schoolwork than they are doing their own jobs. And many folks have had to, um, leave their jobs because they're spending so much time trying to make sure their kids are logged into Zoom, having tech issues, needing a new Chromebook. And with paying 65% of their taxes, you know, they have a right to ask these kinds of questions. So, you know, I, I don't, um, for a minute, um, claim to be a medical expert in any way, shape or form. But I do think we have some questions that we do need to know some answers to. And, you know, it's, one of the things that first, you know, sparked me is that if we are, let's, you know, a lot of the schools in this area are doing hybrid models. And the big question is how are they able to do it? You know, my own son's school opened up their back in class half days. They did have to quarantine, they're going back full day in a week or so. So, you know, that begs the question of why is West Orange not able to get this? And the excuse that we had given, or I shouldn't say excuse, but our rationale at the beginning of this school year was that our ventilation needed to be fixed, which as far as I know, is we're on point to do that. So regardless of how old our buildings are, all of those issues should have been already taken care of going into November 9th. So the question then becomes, um, is when do we then expect, if we're not going, if we're going to go and we're going to say we're not doing hybrid, when is it going to be okay for our students to go back to school? Or do we have a specific number? So I guess I would pose that to Dr. Kelly. What is, do we have to be a hundred percent? No one is, you know, illness, um, no illnesses being reported, no one having COVID? What would be that, that threshold for us to say it's okay to go back in schools? Especially with the governor just increasing indoor sports, um, to have spectators up to 25%? So, you know, the governor's increasing the amount of people that can be in spaces together. And we're saying we can't go back into school. So I'm just curious what that number would be and what we're looking for before we can say the comfort level is, um, because I think you had just said you wouldn't, you know, your recommendation is not to go back into school. What is that that we're looking for? At what point are we saying it's okay for students to go back into school?
So, uh, first of all, I understand what the parents are going through. In, in particular, one of my sisters is not only has small children, but she's also a teacher. And she's trying to teach from home, plus take care of her kids and is really struggling. I, I do understand that intimately. What my concern is, is the recent uptick and the, in, especially in children. And the fact that we've had some issues in multiple buildings in, within our district. And I'm concerned that we're going into something at the worst time. As far as when should we let them like go back? What, what is the criteria? I, I don't have a, a, a specific deadline where I'm thinking, oh, it's got to be December, January, February. I'm just looking for it to see what happens with this curve over the next several days or maybe next couple of weeks. Are we really going into a second wave like the governor had said? Or is this just a small uptick that we don't have to worry about? And one of the things I, 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 I think about, we're going back and forth with this is is it better to, to open up the hybrid model and then close down if we get an outbreak? Or is it better just to have a little caution? And make sure that we can be sure that we're, we're doing everything we can to make sure everybody's safe?
So we have no idea then when it would be okay for parents to, when it would be to send students back into school? We're basically saying it's open ended, we have no idea. So at this point, because I, I'll be honest, a lot of our community members are starting to say, well, if we don't have an end date, if we don't have a plan, then I'm pulling my kid, I'm going to private school because I pay way too much in taxes. So I'm going to send my child to private school where they're going to be going onsite, they're going to be getting education, because the feeling is that right now our students are suffering. So I, I guess my question is, we, we need actual like, I guess thresholds. And that's what I'm looking for. Like what are those thresholds? What are those, what are those milestone points, those critical milestones that we're looking to hit? Before we can say we're comfortable letting students go back into school? Because obviously other districts, like you just mentioned, are all in school right now. So yes, they are having to quarantine maybe a week here, you know, for two weeks, but they're going right back in. Or they're doing, um, models where they're in school two weeks, off school two weeks. You know, they're, they're having their hybrid model. I guess I just have a hard time saying that it's not okay to send students into school if parents are okay with doing that. We don't, I don't think we as the school district or the town community, to be honest, have the right to tell parents they can't send their kids into school when we have no reason really to not let them go. If parents are comfortable with it, they have the option to keep students home. So for the parents that want to send their kids into school, what, what are we looking to tell them to, you know, when it's going to be acceptable? Cause I don't, I, to be honest, I don't feel like you kind of answer that question. I think it's still very open ended. So I guess I'm looking for, are we looking for specific numbers of cases? Are we looking for like the, the winter season to be over? What is it that we're actually looking for?
Dr. Kelly, I, I just, you know, I just want to step in here because I think the question ranges beyond, a medical perspective. And, and so, you know, I'll, I, I'd like to address it just on a couple of levels beyond the medicine. I, I personally, I, I think that, um, the school districts that have drawn a bright line relative to return dates are foolhardy. I think they've simply set an arbitrary date and time that just simply represents another date that when they get closer to it, it could be yet another disappointment for people. Because at the end of the day, the, the degree to which they're able to go in on that date is largely out of their hands. I, I do understand Mrs. Merklinger's question relative to what becomes, you know, is there a metric? Is there a number? You know, I, I would say as far as, you know, that, 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 you know, parentis in loco. You know, when, when children are in our schools, they're our responsibility. And so, uh, at the end of the day, as the superintendent, I'm responsible ultimately for these children when they come into the school. Regardless of whether their parents want to send them, they are my responsibility ultimately to ensure that they are safe and they are protected. And so when I receive counsel, like I have, I would hope that the, that the, that the families in this community would appreciate the fact that upon receipt of this feedback from our district physician, that I gave pause before moving forward with a plan to bring their children into school. I would hope that would be a positive. As far as this idea of, you know, it's happening in other districts and why not here? Well, I can tell you that being on the inside and inside circles with superintendents, there, there are, there isn't a superintendent in this state that is not concerned about the upcoming four to six weeks. There isn't a superintendent in this, in this state that, 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 who, who wouldn't wish that their district physician had the courage to, 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 to make this recommendation? And there are superintendents who have boards who are in support of doing this, but are reticent to do it because they have yet to receive, um, the recommendation, the medical recommendation to do so. And yes, there are school districts that are doing it. And they are in and they are out. And there are children coming into schools and they are in a classroom with a substitute while the teacher stays home and teaches because they're quarantined. And this becomes the norm rather than the exception. So yes, there are, there are school districts that are doing it. But what I would argue is, is that not all school districts are experiencing the number of cases we are. Um, and, you know, is if we're going to look at school districts that, that, that are around us that are in, shall we not look at school districts that are around us that are not? And that are perhaps more representative of our school district in both size and, and demographics? Like Montclair, like South Orange Maplewood. Um, and we are apt to look to those school districts as exemplars for other things. But yet we don't look to them as examples of similar districts nearby that are having likewise difficulty or deciding not to open. But as far as the metric question, I mean, I'm going to answer it as a layman, Dr. Kelly. And then I'd ask Dr. Kelly, maybe Mr. Nova, the others. Is, well, you know, we saw the statewide moderate risk. I, I would, I, I, I would assert that, and correct me if I'm wrong, that with a 15% increase almost over two weeks, one could, one could argue that West Orange has moved beyond simply moderate risk by virtue of the number of cases we have. Now I'm out of my depth there and I, I'm, I'm happy to be told that I'm wrong in that. But I would assert that perhaps we are beyond the moderate risk and we are in the medium risk. And it's such time that our numbers get to a point where we're back in at least the moderate risk. Um, if, you know, that we would reconsider doing that. And, and so, so instead of me telling you, we're not doing it until after January, who knows? I mean, December 1, we could be back into a moderate range of numbers. We could see this uptick plateau and decrease again and be very much in a position where we feel comfortable, as does Dr. Kelly, as does local DUIH to say, you know what? Based upon where the cases are now, I think we're okay. So I don't know if I've answered that capably enough as a layman. Dr. Kelly, Department of Health, if you want to expand on that?
I would just add that, um, one of the key indicators is the rate of uptick. The, the degree of the curve that's going up is what's concerning. As if my colleagues at Department of Health have anything to add.
Oh, I definitely agree with you, Dr. Kelly. Most certainly the up, the uptick is a concerning. As is when we look at what, what is, what constitutes an outbreak within a building. If we have, you know, we have 34 children that are sick right now that have been in, since that we have had over the course of this, um, past month. If we were to put them into, in, into a building, I would have to really break down where they would be in the building and what relation they would have inside or outside of school. And if that's found to be the only thing they do is they go to the same school and there's no relation, that school building has to close down by virtue of, of the regulations. Dr. Cascone, you had to address that with Washington Street School shutting down for two weeks. So it's not a matter of an easy, just quarantine those children. And I, I deal with the private schools in the district as well. So I'm very aware of what's happening in the private schools as well. And they're struggling. They're struggling every day because I talk to them every day.
I, I mean, we can agree to disagree, that's fine. Um, but I guess I have to wonder then, you know, so we have the daycares or the after school programs in our schools. And so I'm going to pivot a little bit here because at the end of the day, it does sound like we're not going to move forward with a hybrid model, just given the recommendations and, and the increase to numbers. So I have to wonder then, what is our plan, you know, what is our timeline looking like? What are our plans for bringing this school district? You know, my husband's a teacher, right? And his, his district is onsite, they're in school. Half day morning is kids onsite, afternoon is virtual with those who opted to stay home. So I'm wondering, you know, if we're going to continue as a virtual model, what are the plans to make our, 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 um, school days more robust and more rigorous? Because what I'm hearing is our students are bored. Um, you know, small anecdotal note, you know, houses, and it's not funny, but houses are being egged in town, right? There's this big thing about houses are being egged. And, you know, part of the discussions I've heard from parents is because kids are bored. They're, they're getting out of school, they don't have enough work to do. The asynchronous Fridays, um, you know, it's really like being a day off. So, um, and I guess this is more towards Dr. C. You know, what are our plans if we do decide to pivot? If that's the ultimate decision to pivot and go, um, virtual? What are our plans as a district to ensure that our students are? Because a lot of folks feel that their students are lagging, that they're very behind, that they're not getting the same education that they would. Or that what, what 65% of their taxes is, you know, being valued at. Um, and that's not something to say, I know our teachers are working hard and that it's not, uh, anything towards them. It is difficult to teach virtually, right? You're not, it's not the same as that brick and mortar. So what are we planning to do if we are staying virtual? To ensure that our students are getting the same, um, education that they would if they were onsite? Um, and with that, what are the plans to increase the vigor and, and ensure that our students are basically having a longer school day, um, that our parents aren't being required to do as much work? Because that's the constant thing that I'm hearing from the community is I spend more time doing my child's homework and submitting it for them and working with them throughout the course of the day than I'm able to do my own job. So, and I think we have to be aware of that, right? That's, that's not to knock our teachers and our faculty, but it is a reality that our parents feel very overwhelmed at this moment. And I'm just wondering what our plans are to make the school day longer or to increase the number of hours? Um, I know nobody wants to be in front of a computer for, for eight hours a day. But what are our thoughts, um, to, to improve the curriculum going forward if we do pivot and decide not to go hybrid?
Sure, I, I can, I can answer, answer that on a kind of a 30,000 foot view at this, at this juncture. You know, I, I, I would just like to, to preface my response, um, to, to this, you know, um, with, with the, you know, the fact that, you know, I, I, you know, listen, we, we understand that, that it's a continuum out there, right? That, that, you know, one per, you know, one person may be flourishing and, and really appreciating and enjoying the experience and, and another might not. And, and with everything in between, right? I, I might suggest. I, I might suggest that we can deduce not only from what we've heard, but also by virtue of the 3,000 some odd students who have opted for virtual with, with full understanding of what that would be, right? Because they've been operating in it and have opted to do it knowing what it's going to be. That we're doing something right now. I agree with you, Mrs. Merklinger. I do. And, and, and I've already, you know, relative to, you know, increasing the rigor in the time. You know, before I talk about that, I, I will say that, that in this virtual fall, we were, we always had a critical eye on, we didn't want to start with a different schedule and then switch to another schedule that was aligned with the hybrid. The current virtual format is, is designed to be married to the hybrid. And, you know, to be married to the hybrid. Once, even if just for a short term, we're relieved of that requirement to be married to the hybrid. It gives us a far greater degree of flexibility in how we can build out an exclusively virtual day to satisfy some of the things that you're talking about. Now, I will tell you, we haven't gone too far afield because obviously we did not want to go too far afield on it until the decision was made. But I can tell you that I had asked Mrs. DeMendez to begin really thinking through this and kind of table topping it with the supervisors and the principals. And there are plans that we would be prepared to begin discussing with faculty on the night. And Mrs. DeMendez, you know, I don't, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to speak for you, but I'd be happy if you wanted to just contribute whatever you felt you could at this point.
Sure. We're in the process of examining and exploring how we reset our full virtual schedule to a winter virtual. And so a part of that process has been first steps, meeting with principals at each of the grade levels and content area supervisors to examine the current schedules, review possibilities, priorities, and feedback that we've received to date. Monday formally, should we move in this direction, we have faculty meetings already set up where we can continue to get feedback district wide, pre-K 12, from staff to say, let's look back at full virtual. What have been the strengths? What have been the areas that really need to improve? What have been concerns that you have regarding our students and their, and their work, et cetera? The ability to move through curriculum and so forth. Some of our priorities are at the elementary level, K3 in particular. We currently have ELA in math every other day. We're looking to make it daily. We are looking to move our intervention blocks into the day instead of the afternoon so that they could be more well attended. They would be married to the ELA and the math block and we would extend that time. We are very cognizant of protecting how much elementary time is on the computer in a day, right? But we will explore extending the content areas in the AM. Another option that we're exploring, we're not there yet, but what about Fridays, right? How do we use Fridays? How could we consider Fridays? Where do we balance that with the teachers' needs to plan with our related services and our interventions that take place on Fridays at the elementary level? At the middle school level, we are looking at the possibilities of either making the content area time longer or in grade seven and eight, the potential is there to teach all periods in a day versus the one to four, the five to eight, and maybe getting to everything. Again, being very careful to not extend to a full day because we do believe that that would be counterproductive for the students, right? So for every one student who says, well, this is easy and I'm getting through it. We have the other student, right, who is really struggling. And so then we have to just think about the whole. At the high school level, we're already at four and a half hours of instruction. We do have a rigorous schedule, but we've also looked to say, how can we consider the Friday? And so then we may be able to add another cycle to the content. So there are some ideas of what we're working through. Again, we're in a very new conversation as we reset our full virtual because this is, is a current ask of us to reconsider. However, we are prepared to move through all of the feedback that we need to on Monday. By the end of next week, having a schedule that we could propose and then implement at the end of each marking period. So for the elementary, that would mean at the new start of the trimester, which I believe is December 15th-ish, around there. I don't have the calendar in front of me, but it's around there, right? So that, at the beginning of the new trimester. And for the middle school and high school, this would potentially be reset at the beginning of the new marking period, which I believe is November 19th. Why do we need some lead time? Because this is a switch. This is switching kids' schedules and we need to inform our parents. We need to make sure that we can move it well. Two of our primary parameters are whatever we come up with, we need to be able to pivot to hybrid as soon as we decide, right? Because if we're looking to get the students back into the building, which we are, we want them back in the building, right? If we need to pivot into a hybrid model where we can move students in person, we want to be able to do that instantaneously. We don't want it to take another week or two to have to reassess, right? That's the first. The second parameter we need to protect is the transportation stagger, right? So whatever new thing we come up with, we need to make sure that it would be in sync with the need to transport all of our students. At this point, we also have greater than 50% of our parents who've opted out, who've opted into full-time virtual. So that is a factor in just our thinking about how to make sure that our synchronous and asynchronous experiences continue to align to any in-person experiences. And I think the last thing I would submit is that the recommendation that we're hearing is that if we return our students to school en masse, in large number, all of our students, right, plus all of our staff, that that is a, a very large number. And therefore that's something that we would want to be very cautionary about. But the recommendation is not saying that we shouldn't have any of our students in our buildings. So we would continue with our special education students in small group. We would now look at opportunities to maybe bring in small groups of students and return to that support hub model idea, right? That we, Dr. Cascone spoke about at the beginning of this process, where we can bring in small groups of students, where we can monitor that, where we can as best as we can provide that contact tracing, right? So that way the students can get their specific needs met. Because again, for every student who says they're, they're doing well and moving quickly, there's a significant group of students who we will need to provide additional support to. I.e. our kindergarten students, right? Our academic support students, our special education students. So these are all of the things that we're exploring. By no means do we have a set framework at this time, but we are moving efficiently through a feedback process. And we hope to formalize something by November 16th because we want to implement middle school by the 19th and high school and elementary for the start of the new trimester, which is December 15th-ish.
Okay. Thank you, Ebony. That was actually really helpful. So I appreciate that. Thank you. So just kind of taking that a little bit further. So part of why we didn't start back onsite in September was our ventilation issues. But at that time, we had very low numbers. And I think the help, the folks on, from the town and Dr. Kelly can confirm that we had very low numbers. You know, things were opening up, but we couldn't go back onsite because of the fact that we had the ventilation issues, which we've now resolved. Is there any thought, and I know this probably won't be a popular idea, but if we see numbers decrease, is there thought to extending the school year to bring students back onsite? You know, it's not something that, you know, I've ever been a big fan of, but these are uncertain. You know, these are crazy circumstances. So would there be the idea to modify the school calendar, extending the school year? You know, there is talk of some of the extracurriculars that are noted as winter, indoor winter sports or activities being moved to the spring season, which then pushes out a lot of things, colleges moving seasons to the summer and spring seasons. So have we thought, put any thought to extending the school year into the summer or maybe a little bit longer into June? Not that I, not that I would be a big fan of it myself, but just something to help get our students back on, you know, into, assuming that by the spring or hopefully by January, that we're back onsite and numbers have decreased and we're back at that moderate level that Dr. C was mentioning. Which that seems, and if, correct me if I'm wrong, once we're at the moderate or even better level, we would be expecting to go back onsite. So whether that's next week or if that's in a month, two weeks, that would be our plan. Is that we're going to go back onsite when we're at that quote unquote, safe level to return? Is there consideration to moving into the, to maybe later in June?
Yeah. So, no, it's a great point. And, 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 you know, while we haven't, you know, certainly, we have not begun to have, we have not had conversations about modifying the school calendar. And certainly, you know, if we were to be, to do that, we would certainly, you know, have conversations with the board. You know, before we obviously, you know, spoke publicly about that. But what we have talked about is the idea of enhancing our summer programming. And so when you look at, you know, like the E S Y model, but not just simply for special needs students, but in, almost like an E S Y model for regular ed students. And so, you know, students who, over the course of the year, regardless of level, regardless of grade, that, you know, was assessed, had, had developed significant learning gaps, would be eligible for like a regular ed E S Y program. And this is something that we were going to look at in terms of the budget cycle for next year was building in a budget. And my vision for it is that it's not simply, you know, a, an academic program, although it would be that. But, but hopefully we're back to normal and there'd be very much a holistic approach to this E S Y program where we'd really be addressing the needs of the whole kid. It would almost be kind of more of like an enrichment format where we'd really be trying to kind of get kids back in the right state of mind, not only academically, but also socially, emotionally. So an extension of the school year in some way. But probably at this juncture, we're thinking just for those students who have been identified as perhaps needing it before moving on to the next grade.
Okay. And so one of my last questions is more on a social, emotional level. So I think it's great that we're, you know, investing the time and teachers are spending time on, on ESL or SL, yeah, SEL. But I don't think social, socialization, you can't teach. You know, it's kind of one of those things, like I say about West Orange pride, you can't teach it, you have to feel it. And you have to experience it. And I think the best example that I can say is being at the football game last week, you know, and seeing the cheerleaders, seeing the football team just so excited to be around one another. And everyone's following the rules, right? So everyone's following the rules for masks and what's required by the NJSIAA and following those guidelines. And I have to say, I give kudos to all of our extracurriculars, whether it's marching band, the sports teams, our coaches, the, the folks that are doing security on staff, everyone's following those rules, right? So they have their masks on, they're social distancing, wearing gloves. You know, the rules for spectators are they want you in your groups of folks that you know, right? So if you're there with your family of 10, you are only sitting with your family of 10. And I would, you know, I would just beg the community, don't make judgments of folks that you don't know what their situation is or what those groups of people are that are together. But that in mind, going back to the social piece of it, have we put into any thought into how we can assist our students if we're, you know, going to this virtual model with a socialization piece? Or is there thought to bring them into school to maybe meet with their teachers or do an outdoor activity? Because we've said outdoors is okay. Just because I think we are, our students are suffering on that level, right? So they're not in school. And, and seeing someone on a computer screen is not the same as being out with them and enjoying their company and having a conversation. I see it. Everyone knows I coach. I see it all the time with the, the girls that are cheerleading. You know, they're so excited to be around one another and they can't stop talking because they just are so happy to be with each other. And I think any parent that has their kids involved in any activities right now, they're seeing that, right? And a lot of folks are letting their stu, their kids do this because they're looking for that social outlet since they're not in school together. Have we thought, putting any thought into how we can help with those types of events or activities for our students?
Yeah, you, you know, I think if, if, for those who might recall kind of how I was speaking to this beginning, when I, Mrs. DeMendez begrudgingly is utilizing my support hubs concept. This is, I'm sorry, this has become a subject of an inside joke because she sort of hates it, but at the same time understands it's actually pretty valid. But this, you know, this support hubs model was this idea that, you know, before we, you know, we, we started throwing all of our attention into this, this complex logistic undertaking of the hybrid model, was that we really wanted to use our schools as, 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 as touchstones, if you will, for, for these services, including social, emotional and socialization. So I would love to see us get back to that where we're looking at our clubs and activities and figuring out ways, even like it, even, you know, when it's a little bit cold out, like, you know, just opportunities for kids to be on campus or even in the school, but, but in smaller numbers in large spaces where we can do that. So I think we, we definitely can up our game as far as that goes. I think also is really starting to focus on, and, and I, I don't have a window into what we're doing online, but really putting a critical eye on the engagement of students in that virtual platform. And I'm sure we're doing it and doing it pretty well, but, but really providing our staff with additional professional learning for how do we create community of learn, communities of learners within our classrooms where we're fostering engagement and interaction between students? And, and whether that's in the real time of the class or whether it's through, not unlike we would do with projects, except, you know, instead of going over to your friend's house and working on the poster, you know, you're, you're in a Zoom room doing it together. But how are we facilitating additional opportunities for students to be engaging with each other? That being said, and I talked about this and, and, and while I, you know, while I obviously would be much more reserved in the idea of that, you know, we need our parents to partner with us in the educational process. But I think when it comes to really calling upon our, our families, and I know you're doing it, is, and I, and I'm speaking as a parent now, and the way I'm owning this as a parent with my own children, is really putting a critical eye on not only the degree to which I am meaningfully and constructively engaging with my children and my wife together at home, establishing that sense of community within our family, whether my kids want it or not, you know, my teenage kids. But also, you know, seeking out and facilitating safe opportunities for socialization for them as well. I, I think that's an area where we could really ask families to be a part of that in building that. But you're right, Mrs. Merklinger. I think these are areas where we can expand and really place a critical eye on that, particularly as we start to go into the winter months and there's less opportunities maybe to be outside doing that. So I, I, agreed.
Thank you. That's really all the questions I have. But, you know, I do want to recognize that I know our teachers are doing a great job and it is, you know, it's a tough situation. So none of my questions are really meant towards, are meant to be offensive towards our, our faculty and staff. Like I said, I'm married to a teacher. I see the struggles he has. But we do have a due diligence to our taxpayers in town to ensure that they are getting the education they expect from West Orange. So I, you know, thank everyone for joining and putting up with all my questions.
Great. Thank you. Ms. Tennycliff?
Thank you, Mr. Alper. Thank you to all the experts who've joined us tonight. We really appreciate you being here and giving us some more color on the conversation that you had with Dr. Cascone last Friday. I think I only have a few questions and probably for Dr. Kelly and his, and Ms. Iovino. When we're talking about seeing more children becoming symptomatic and, you know, is this, is there, have there been studies or are there, is there data on how they're getting sick? Has it mutated? You know, what are the risks for putting children together? I'm trying to get a sense of that. And then also from the perspective of the contract, contact tracing, is, you know, are we seeing our young people getting sick because of outdoor things? Or is this mostly confined to indoor things as you're doing the tracing? What are you uncovering?
I'll start from my side. A lot of the information that you're, you're looking for, we, as physicians are looking for that same information. Why? Is there mutation? There's, I've seen some literature that there is a mutation on one of the surface receptors. There's, I've seen some literature that there is a mutation on one of the surface receptors of the virus and the protein that makes it stickier. So um, and whether or not are we seeing more children now simply because it's spread and the older patients have already had it and they're immune or, or worse yet, they passed away or some other factor? We don't know, those studies are ongoing. I think we'll, we'll know for the next pandemic, unfortunately. But right now this is all evolving and we're, we're sort of going on the fly and trying to look for trends.
Okay, thank you.
In terms of the contact tracing with the children, could you just repeat your question for that piece while I answer it?
Sure, I'm just wondering, are you seeing when you're doing the tracing, is it coming out that a lot of the infections and the that you're seeing and the, the symptomatic folks are, are, is that coming from folks who've been in outdoor situations with gathering? Or is it in predominantly indoor situations, a mix of both? I'm just trying to understand what the, the risk factors are.
I think it's been a mix of both. I think then um, you know, people going to events, mostly social events and children with playdates and going accompanying their families to these types of events, social events. And um, the, the spread is just very different than it was before. We're really seeing very, we're, we're seeing very symptomatic people this time, including the children, which is very, very concerning, especially when you have an ill parent at home trying to take care of their sick children. It becomes very complicated and it does change the incubation and the quarantine period. So if you have, you know, we're looking at, uh, people talk about the 14 day incubation period. What's important to recognize is that if a parent is unable to isolate from their child for 10 days because they're the caregiver, that puts the entire household out of commission for 24 days. The initial 10 days of the infected individual, then expanded to the, to the additional 14 days for the person being quarantined. So in fact, you could have a child who's in contact with their parent out for 24 days, not just 14. And vice versa with a parent who has to care for a child. It's a very complicated virus. Like Dr. Kelly said, we're gaining information every day, but we, we can't determine whether this, you know, there's any additional spread inside, outside, outside obviously is better. We're not seeing as much. But unfortunately, with things starting to move inside, we are seeing spread from inside events as well.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
That'll be all, Mr. Alper.
Thank you, thank you. Um, I've got a few, but I think some of them have been uh taken. So let me just kind of work through this and anybody who uh has an answer, please feel free to jump in on these. You know, I, I just think this is a really hard blow to the people who've been uh, you know, needing to get back. So I just want to make sure that, you know, we kind of understand what, you know, what we're saying. I think one of my first questions is, you know, i- if, if, if the district were to say, listen, we've, we've, we've got to get back in one way or another. What, what would we need to do to make that, you know, beyond the precautions that you're already well aware that we're doing? What would we need to do to make that something that you would feel comfortable with, if there even is? You know, even if it's something that we've never even talked about and, you know, I'm pulling this out of thin air. But if we were to say, what if we cut the size of each of our cohorts by 50% or by three quarters? So that only, you know, one quarter as many kids were going into the building each day? Or if we were to only do K to five and spread them out among every building in the district so that there were even fewer per building? And, you know, some of this is probably completely impractical, but I'm sort of saying, think outside the box. If we said we had to do something starting as soon as possible, you know, whether it's next Monday or another week to plan, things like that. Is there, are there scenarios that you could find that would make it seem safer to you?
Uh, I'm not, I'll speak from my angle. I think if, if we learn more information about how to protect all the children short of putting them in full healthcare P P E, you know, if we're going to talk hypotheticals way outside the box, if we can have every student wearing the same protection that we as healthcare wear, the gown, the, the mask, the N95, and, and have the training on how to use those, those things, that, that might be a hypothetical, but I don't think it's practical because it does take training. And it, it, when you wear a true N95 mask correctly, it is very uncomfortable. It's, it's, it's hard to get, see children or even high school students dealing with that. And that, I, I think if we learned more about um different, maybe if there's new research coming out showing a better way to keep people from getting uh infected, maybe it's not six feet, maybe it's 10 feet. Uh, like, like you suggested, maybe smaller classrooms, maybe more barriers. But unfortunately, we, we just don't know. So from my angle, what really is the most important is, is the rate of the curve and spread of the infection. If we see it slowing down, I think we can approach this uh with a breath of relief and say, okay, let's, let's get moving. And, and I do understand the, uh, both angles um from what I heard about the taxpayers, I'm a taxpayer and uh it, I understand you're paying your property taxes and it's going to the school and the school's not, your kids aren't going to school. And, and, and it's, that's, that's taken into consideration with my thought process. And the other, the other thing that I think is um really, really important is that the children and students are lacking that social part of going to school. I mean, some of my, everybody's best memories are with your friends in school, right? So uh, I mean, that's, it's with a heavy heart that I make these recommendations. But if it, I think what we'll see over the next several weeks is where this is going, or maybe even next several days, we, we don't know. And then, and then we can really be very aggressive in getting the, the children, students back as soon as possible. That's the ideal, soon as possible and safely.
And I think Cheryl kind of, you know, uh, tried to touch on this a little bit, that to the extent that we could have, you know, actual, you know, scientific criteria, not calendar criteria, you know, and, you know, I have no idea what that would be, whether it were, whether it was, you know, X days consecutively with Y or fewer cases among kids 18 or under or, you know, days where there are no increases or, you know, whatever, you know, that would be. And, you know, I'm not really asking you to on the fly come up with them, but I think it's important to sort of have them. You know, I know today, uh, it looked like there were four new cases today versus 10 and 11, and I think 17 in some of the more recent days. And, you know, obviously it's just one day. Um, you know, I don't know if you have any thoughts on if that might be a good sign or maybe just, you know, an aberration.
Just to speak to the numbers and how that's, how that's reported, the numbers get reported once a day. So that's not to say that no additional cases come in throughout the day. It just means that was the report you got first thing at nine o'clock this morning. That changes legitimately every minute. I can go on the system right now and tell you probably since we started, there's been new confirmed cases put into the system. Just so you're aware that, that, that we get cases every day, we just report them once, once a day.
Yeah, this is sort of a 24 hour cutoff.
It's, it's, we do apply a 24 hour cutoff, but believe you me, they're coming in and we had a lot, we had quite a nice handful of cases today to investigate. And if you're asking for a time what frame, what I can do is give you a perspective. It may not, a fit may not be into the school system, but I can offer you some information on how we look at an outbreak that might help you in terms of how we, how we determine the end of an outbreak in a facility. So we have to go to incubation periods and this is for the majority of illness, especially those that are respiratory um and viral. So based upon whatever the disease is, there's an incubation period for that specific disease, whether it be chickenpox or regular flu or what we're dealing with right now. The incubation period for COVID-19 has been established at 14 days. So for us to allow a facility that we're following or an outbreak that we're following to be released from those regulations that were very strict and stringent on, on the, on the daily. We follow the numbers in the facilities, for instance, a long-term care facility. We have to have two full incubation periods, that's a full 28 days of no additional cases before we say it's safe. Before we say that, that outbreak is deemed complete. So that's just some perspective for you on, in terms of numbers and values and how you look at, how we look at that. Now, being that we haven't had such a viral, and we're dealing with a virus. If viruses had definite definition, like Dr. Kelly was saying, we don't know what's happening with the virus. Unfortunately, we don't have an antibiotic like we do with a bacterial infection where we say we treat it and in seven days you're okay. So that, when you put the word virus in there and you start adding kids, you really have to look at what is safe. And for a perspective, that's, I wanted to just offer you the outbreak perspective. So you had something to think about in terms of incubation periods.
I appreciate it. Um, i- is there anything to be said for the controlled environment of the school? You know, it, just in that it seems, you know, from a parent perspective to be a safer place, that, you know, that you've got some controls over masks and how close together kids are. You know, as opposed to, you know, at home or in pods, you know, it's, it's hours that we're sort of controlling and, and maybe keeping kids safer.
Well, one of the factors that we know now that we didn't know in, in going back into the spring is that there is, it can be aerosolized. And so there is, it, somebody who was in a room and coughed, depending on the, the, how quickly the air exchanges, those, that aerosolized virus can, can linger in the room. And in effect, you can, you can have a sick building. So uh, it, it's not an easy question to, to really answer and say, oh, is it safer, is it not safer? I could tell you from experience, some school districts, some buildings are safer. They are. And other districts and other buildings aren't, they're worse. And I don't think we really have the research to really pin down why that is right now. But no, none of us have ever had to deal with this sort of type of pandemic before, so we're learning as, as medical professionals.
Right. Um, in the buildings that you're seeing, are there, are there common threads for the ones you had said that some of your districts and schools and buildings seem to be doing, you know, more okay than others? Are there common threads, whether they're newer or whether they have particular, you know, needlepoint bipolar ionization as opposed to MIR filters or, you know, anything like that?
I, I, I haven't seen anything specifically that would, I could say it's definitely because of, let's say, the filter or the ionization or how many kids or age of the building. I, I think we will know that in time, but right now we just don't. And anecdotally, I haven't really, I've seen um some newer schools with not as many students do really well. And some larger school districts with older buildings that seem to do worse. I, I would say as a generalization, that may be a factor.
Ken, I'm sorry, uh, you muted yourself.
That's okay, I was kind of mumbling to myself anyway that I wasn't sure where I was, but I didn't mean to be muted, so thank you. Controlled environment we covered. Um, you know, I know there was a, a study out of Spain that I've seen where, you know, it was showing that, you know, it was something like in a full classroom that your rate of infection would be X, but in, and I, I can't imagine they were actually doing that with real kids and putting them in a class without mask, but in that same classroom with half the kids in it, it would be Y. And if they were all wearing masks, it would only be Z and, and so on. You know, I, I guess, I guess this is just me getting back to the idea of this controlled environment and the idea that at least, at least in theory, that it should be safer and that to the extent that we, you know, are seeing districts are able to, you know, do this to some extent, that it seems that there's, you know, something to that, you know? And there was the Massachusetts uh Health Department head who said that, you know, even in their red zones, that, you know, he thought schools should be open unless there was evidence of spread within them. You know, is there anything to that, that idea that, you know, schools should remain open until there's, you know, evidence that there's actually spread within them?
Well, I, I, I think we do have evidence that there's spread within the schools uh in, in our district right now. So um, but yeah, I, I, I would favor our students being in the classroom in an environment that we can control. That's ideal. The problem is we haven't identified exactly what that is because despite our interventions, we're still seeing spread and we're seeing an increase in spread. So we're missing something, we're missing a piece of the puzzle. Hopefully that'll come down with research. As far as the models, um, like when you talk about Spain, there's so many variables that are plugged into those computer models that they don't often translate very well into clinical practice, unfortunately, when we look back. Um, I think you could see that with, even with this pandemic, the way the models were predicted early didn't pan out the way they, they said they were.
Right. Um, you know, I, I think I just have some real concerns that if we wait for the, you know, the perfect time that, you know, we, we, there's, when is that, right? That there's just never going to be a perfect time to reopen and it's just, you know, it's, it's difficult not having a sense of, you know, when it will be a, you know, a, a safe enough time to open, right? Where, where it seems like the number is where the curve is down, where it seems like it's an okay place that we can actually finally start and then see how we actually, you know, do at it, you know? And then, you know, obviously the health and safety of our students and staff is always going to be our highest priority. But, you know, I've got concerns that outside of COVID, you know, that, and I should have thought to ask about this before, but, you know, I'm concerned that not seeing kids in person, that staff are, you know, missing some of the things that they would see when they do see kids in their building every day, you know, whether it's hygiene or, you know, signs of, you know, I hate to say of abuse and, you know, things that you maybe aren't seeing in the relatively controlled environment of the kids Zoom camera, but that you are seeing when you see them every day. So, you know, it's, it's just on my mind is, you know, as it goes longer and longer before we get the kids in the buildings.
I, I agree with you and uh it is troubling that we don't have a firm, we can say this is the criteria, but I think we will. And I think it's, we have to, in medicine, you're always looking at risk versus benefit. And right now with the curve going up so aggressively, it's like we're speeding to a stop sign. So the, the way I feel is let's slow down before we get to the stop sign and, and look around, make sure there's no other traffic and then we'll go. But right now, I, I agree with you, it's frustrating and I think students would do better in the classroom than the virtual without question. And uh, it, it weighs on me very heavily every day that our, our students are not in the classroom, they're not getting all those benefits. So my, my feeling would be to try and get back to that, that setting as soon as we possibly can safely. And I, I think soon we will know. My biggest concern is the rate of infection, the uptick. That's, that's the biggest concern right now. And it may just be a blip or it might be a second wave. And, and we just don't know, but this past several weeks have been concerning.
Definitely. All right. I think, you know, I, I had a few things on instruction, but I think we covered that pretty well with Ms. Mendez and Dr. C. You know, I, I like the mention of, of group work, right? The idea that there's ways to start doing some group projects and things that maybe have the kids interacting in, in some different ways. You know, that's not quite what we're doing right now. Looking forward to that. I think that's all I've got on that. Dr. Cascone, if you want to uh close this segment out with anything? Right. Um, thank you, Mr. Alper. Um, and, and at this time, I would just, I just again, uh, extend uh thanks to Nurse Ayavino, Mr. Franzino, um, Mrs. De Nova uh for joining us. I am gonna, um, you know, you're, you're more than welcome to, um, you know, go enjoy your evening. You're more than welcome to stay on and, and, and listen in. Uh, Dr. Kelly, if I would just ask you, you, you know, if you want to um just kind of, you know, kind of mute your camera, you know, for lack of better, and we'll just kind of keep you in the, in the wings in the event uh I get tossed a ball, I'm not able to field. But that does, uh, Mr. Alper conclude um the superintendent's report for this evening? All right, thank you. Thank you, folks. All right. So up next, uh, we're going to take some public comment. I want to highlight to everyone that because this is a special meeting and not a regular meeting, we have one public comment period. So whether it's on an agenda item or whether on what we just heard now or on something entirely different that doesn't appear on the agenda, uh, now's the time to uh bring that up. So with that, uh, you can raise your hand and when you come in, please be sure to give us your name and address. And please adhere to the three minute time limit because I know there's a lot of people here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alper. Uh, yes, as you mentioned, it is the raise your hand button located at the bottom of your screen for callers who have called in. It is star nine, you only have to press it once and um you will be put in a queue. And for those out there, you do not have to wait for anyone to stop talking before you raise your hand. It will put you in the queue and it's actually better if you raise your hand now, if you'd like to speak, so we know how many we have in the queue. So first we are going to go to Rebecca Moses. If you can please follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Hi, Rebecca Moses, One Galloway Court. Um, first of all, I want to thank you all for having this session. I just have a few questions. If you're saying the kids are not safe in our schools right now due to the area metrics, which I really do understand, are you also going to be canceling sports and other extracurriculars? Is there a plan for including testing, uh, meaning COVID testing for students and staff in going forward with an eventual reopening plan? One moment, sorry. If the decision to stay remote is based on metrics, are all of the building upgrades done and ready for a school reopening when the metrics allow for it? I understand not giving a date, although I'm disappointed in it, uh, but then I agree with- I understand not giving a date, although I'm disappointed in it, uh, but then I agree with Ms. Merklinger that at least giving us a threshold at which she will be reevaluating this would be extremely helpful. As you reexamine the fall schedule and move to a winter schedule and talk to teachers, are you going to be asking for parent feedback also? Um, I think that most of us can agree with, uh, what the doctor just said, that our kids will be better served in the classroom. And if we can't bring them back right now, how can we enhance the experience our kids are having in the meantime to be much more like their classroom experience? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Next we have Laura Nosner. If you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Hello?
Hi. Just your name and address for the record?
Uh, it's Laura Nester, five zero four Eagle Rock Avenue. So I wrote this email to the board and the superintendent earlier this week, and I'm just going to read it because it's all of my feelings. I'm extremely distressed about the news coming out today that my child may not get to go back into the classroom as expected on Monday. First of all, she's so excited. Her teachers began prepping them for the return to school last week, and she has been counting down the days. She understands it'll be different, but she so longs to be seen. Yes, seen. She is not being seen in these Zoom classes. How is my child not being seen, you may be asking? Well, here goes. First, my second grader sits at her desk nicely most of the time, but others do not. What children are being seen? If you guess the ones that are not sitting in front of their cameras or playing with toys, blankets, pets, et cetera, then you would be correct. This next instance was in her enrichment class on Wednesday afternoon. The teacher was going through the kids in the order that she saw them on the screen to have them share a word that they came up with from the word Halloween. My child had her hand raised both physically and via Zoom. What did she call on? Well, the teacher said, all right, I called on everyone and sent everyone to the breakout rooms. While my child is upset because no, not every child was called on. In fact, my child was the only one that was not called on, likely because when you unmute, you get put to the front of the line of the screen. And my child kept getting pushed to the end of the line. And there's a lot of children from each elementary school. How else is she not being seen? Well, due to the fact that she was reading above grade level at her September reading level assessment last year, apparently it was not required that she get evaluated in January. Then a pandemic hit and she didn't get evaluated at the end of the year either. Oh, and she still has not been evaluated, which means her reading level is likely set well below her actual reading level. Why are sports being prioritized over getting our children to school? Our town, which now is telling you to make a decision to keep my child from being seen, is showing their hypocrisy by telling you that school isn't safe. They just allowed a huge trunk or treat with people not wearing masks attending. They just sent an email for rec wrestling and basketball. How are those things safe, but school isn't? We are seriously considering sending her to a Catholic school where she will be seen. If my child can't attend her school, there cannot be a paid childcare program running in that same school. If my child cannot attend her school, then that program needs to be shut down as well. I've already armed myself with the tools to teach second grade math because I already see she's bored. So I will be doing teaching with a two-year-old wanting my attention as well. I was such a huge supporter of the Western schools bragging about how great Kelly is, but I can't right now. I'm not feeling any greatness right now. And that doesn't mean that the teachers aren't working hard, because I know that they're working harder than ever. It's because a town that is failing us is telling us to not prioritize our children's education. Tell Parisi to shut everything else down if he wants schools to be shut down. That is the next email I will be writing. And I did. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next we have Jeremiah Salinas. If you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Awesome. So six days ago.
I'm sorry, Jeremiah, if we just need your name and address for the record.
Jeremiah Salinas, seven Crystal Ave.
Thanks.
All right. So the, uh, the mayor's update, uh, six days ago, he said there were nine additional cases since yesterday, five days ago. Another nine additional cases, four days ago, another 11 additional cases from then different addresses. Three days ago, another 10 additional cases. So every, every day for the past week or so, we've been, uh, getting about 10, 10 additional cases on average. Now, the reason why we're having this meeting right now on Zoom is because we can't gather together. It is shocking, to say the least, to hear some of you, uh, on the board prioritize sports, prioritize other things. And say, uh, on one hand, that uh, parents are having a hard time with the work that the kids are doing. And at the same time, saying that there needs to be more rigorous, uh, work provided for the students. So we can't, we can't have it both ways, right? You have to listen to what, uh, the medical experts are saying. No, you are correct. Nothing will ever replace, uh, in-person learning. At the same time, nothing would ever replace the loss of a life of one of our schools. You, 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 you started to talk about, are there any, is there any evidence that, you know, we have COVID in our schools? Our schools are not fully opened yet, and we've had had cases at, um, Kelly, Washington, uh, Redwood, uh, Gregory, uh, and, and, and a few others, uh, that I don't remember off the top of my head. And you're still trying to figure out if we should open our schools or, or still asking if there's evidence in our school buildings, if, if there is COVID in our school buildings? Look, years ago, there was an issue with the water. We still don't have any answers if the water, uh, issues have been resolved. Years ago, and this has nothing to do with COVID. Years ago, there was an issue with the air quality system in our school district, and we still don't know if that has been resolved. So just do everyone a favor, right? It's not safe to go back. Even the mayor is saying the party shouldn't be held in town. Let, let's review everything. Uh, uh, let's take our time. Listen to the medical experts here. If people want to send your kids to private schools, I'm sorry to say this, but you know, that, that's your choice. You can do that, whether we have open schools or we don't have open schools, if you're not happy with the services that you're receiving. But you can't put people's health and safety, you can't prioritize that, right? That has to be the one thing that you have to do. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Next, the Zoom name is just listed as Rona, R O N A. If you can please follow the prompt on your screen and your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Rona Dickman. Um, I live at 11 Lakeview Drive. I just want to say I'm coming to this meeting from the perspective of being a high school parent, but also a nurse practitioner and a school nurse for 10 years. And so I guess my question really is, from what I can see and from what's been going on, COVID is a virus that's going to be with us for a long time. It's not going to go away. We're never going to get to zero. So what I want to see from the school is what is your plan? That includes, as many people have said, metrics, which means at what point do you feel that it's safe to open? Is it a rate of transmission? Is it, you know, the number of people, cases per day, the trends? Something needs to be told to the parents as to where we're going. Because a vaccine isn't coming anytime soon and our kids are suffering, most of them. Is there a plan for, let's say kindergarten and first and second grade to start opening at some point? What would be the metrics that you would need to see for that to go forward? Instead of constantly kicking the can down the road, we can't open now because the buildings are not safe. We can't open now because the numbers are going up in January. It's going to be flu, I'm sure. And so this is just going to keep going on and on. The research that I have read indicates that cases are not spreading in schools. They are spreading in the community, which if schools are closed, means that more spread is going to happen as people have playdates and, you know, get together in their pods. There's going to be cases no matter what we do. The question is, is school less safe than not having school? And it's not clear to me that opening school is going to increase cases. Opening restaurants for sure, opening bars, having parties, going to weddings, all those things, yes. But school under controlled environment with masks and distancing and whatever else needs to be in place, that has actually not shown to be the issue. And so I guess what I really want to see is a plan, a plan that says, this is what we're going to do. If the numbers are at X, we're going to do Y. When we can do it, I don't know, but at least we should have a plan. We're going to try kindergarten and first graders because they're less likely to spread the virus. Maybe we can't open the high school at all. Whatever it is, I would like to see a plan for opening school instead of, this is why we can't open now. This is why we can't open tomorrow. This is why we can't open next week. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have, uh, Phyllis Flitt. If you can follow the prompt. Actually, Phyllis, it looks like you are on an older version of Zoom. I'm going to have to promote you to a panelist to speak. Don't do anything with your computer. I'm going to come over and then I'm going to, uh, shut your camera off. Okay, I'm just going to stop your video there. And then, okay. Just your name and address for the record, please.
Police Flit, 55 Bullen Drive. I'm on my son's school laptop, so I guess that's the old Zoom. So first of all, thank you to the panelists. This is fantastic. To the gentleman who works in the other districts, are there any cases that have been shown that the spreading actually took place in the schools? Because as, you know, some, some other questions have posed, our school has been closed since March and there have been all these cases. Because school is closed, people are getting together and, and pods and things like that. There seems to be all these cases of school-aged children while schools closed. So the kids are going to be in masks while they're in the schools. We have this great multimillion dollar air system that we have put in. Thank you to Dr. Cascone and the board. And I don't know why we are pushing to put off putting our children in school when we have spent all this money and time and energy to put our children into a safe place. I have a high school child, I have a middle school child, both who are doing fine in home, but they will thrive when they can see the teacher and see the people that they are in their school with. Somebody mentioned earlier about doing a project. Yes, great. They can all do their projects in breakout rooms. But if you're actually working with your teammates next to each other, you're going to collaborate differently than if you're in a breakout room. I have one child who's maybe a little bit more shy, who won't speak up over Zoom. But yet if he were in person with the children, he would definitely speak up more. Um, I have another child who tunes out the Zoom because he's bored. And just seeing the teachers faces, his co, his, his, I want to say colleagues, but his, his, the other kids in the, in the classroom, he wouldn't tune out, um, as much as he is now. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next we have, uh, Kristen Russell. If you can, please follow the prompt on your screen.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Um, Kristen Russell, 53 Lawrence Avenue. Um, you know, I, I have emailed you all. You, I'm pretty sure you all know how I feel. Uh, I have a special needs student who absolutely needs to get in the building, absolutely needs to have his therapies. He has regressed significantly. And I have great concerns over the fact that there was no outreach to me. I have had to make several outreaches. And also basically write the IEP that needed to be given to him myself, um, because those things weren't being done. I don't know where the assessment of where students are is being done, but I am seeing no differentiation. I was flat out told that it is November and you still haven't figured out how to do a virtual reading assessment to find out their reading levels. So we don't know reading levels of elementary school students. That's concerning. Um, there is no reading groups, um, to differentiate because you don't know what their reading levels are at this point. You don't know how much they've regressed, um, from the spring, because again, you don't know how to assess them virtually, apparently. So now to say that we are most likely not looking at coming back into the, the buildings at all in person. And we still don't have a virtual model to assess these students is really, really, really concerning to me. You know, obviously I, I have to advocate for special needs students. You know, these therapies remotely are not doing justice. You know, I have paid out of pocket to increase my, um, my private therapies significantly, uh, just to support my son. And at least I'm able to do that and know how to do that. Um, I worry about people who don't. And yes, I have a very big issue with the town saying that we shouldn't open schools, which I agree with the previous person who said, you know, it seems like the schools are the safest place for them to be. But we're having sports and not just school-sponsored sports, but you know, the, the town rec sports and all of those are still going on and all these events are still going on. If we are so worried about the numbers going up, those should also be closed down before we choose to close schools down. I, I truly believe that. And yes, I, um, you know, we said we were going to see another survey to parents because the first survey that went out, went out that first week, kindergartners weren't even in school yet, and we haven't seen another survey to give our feedback. I would really love to have another survey. We did say that was going to come out towards the end of September. We still haven't seen that. I think we do need to give some parent feedback because I do know there are a lot of parents that have a lot of strong feelings about how things are being presented. And how, you know, I mean, today turned into an asynchronous day for my son, and we didn't even know it was going to be. So there's a lot of communication and there's a lot of things that do need to be, I think revamped if we are going to be staying virtual, um, including a lot more support and a lot more outreach to make sure that we're not losing kids and they're not slipping through the cracks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, the Zoom, uh, name is labeled as MW Teacher. If you can follow the prompt on your screen. The Zoom name is MW Teacher. There should be a prompt on your screen to unmute. Okay, I'm going to come back to that one. And the next one I have is Oriana. If you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Hello?
Hi.
Hi, this is Oriana Colombo. Um, I'm at 33 Baxter Lane. Um, I'm just very disappointed in what I'm hearing today because it sounds like, um, in person isn't going to happen after all. Where we were assured for months that it would. And I've now lost time because I believed in our town that this was going to happen. And days before, I'm hearing it's not. So I'm kicking myself for believing it and not putting my kid into private like I should have. My 12-year-old listened in on the last board event meeting and he asked me, Mom, why are all these teachers calling and telling that they don't want to teach in school on my Zoom? They're telling us they can't wait to see us. And it was very disheartening for him, for me to he, hear him even ask me that question. I don't want him, he shouldn't be aware of all this, but if the teachers need to remember when they call in one after the other, there are, our kids are listening too. And it's not okay. And it's not right. And our kids' education needs to be a priority in this town. And it really doesn't feel like it is anymore. And it's upsetting and disappointing. And thank God for football, because that's all my son has left. We went to the dentist's office today. There was a six and seven-year-old who wouldn't leave my son's side because they were so desperate for social interaction because they saw a kid who looked close to his size that they could talk to. And all I thought of is just how sad it is that they are just reaching anywhere they can to have some interaction because they don't have school, because the Zoom isn't the same. And when is it going to happen? January? How do we know in January? The same thing's not going to happen again. And then they're going to say March, and then the year's over. Why bother? It keeps getting pushed. And it's not okay. We pay too much for this. We've been patient. Enough is enough. Teachers all around us are teaching in person, half day, some days even full days. We fixed the ventilation system. That was the issue. And now, now it's the numbers going up again. But the schools around us who've stayed open, they're not closing yet. Agreed, maybe they will, but they haven't announced it yet. When are we going to try? Our kids' education needs to be made a priority in this town because too many of us are contemplating private or moving at this point. And it's just a terrible thing. Thank you to the rest of you who've done all this work on trying to make it happen. I appreciate all of you and the teachers. I know you work hard, but we want our kids back in school where they should be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna try one more time for MW Teacher. If you can follow the prompt on your screen, please. There we go. Hi, can you hear us? I see you unmuted. Are you there? Okay, I'm gonna have to go on to the next person. Melinda Huerta, if you can please follow the prompt on your screen.
Hello.
Hi.
Hello, good evening. My name is Melinda Huerta, 17 Park Drive South. I wanted to thank all the board members and the superintendent for having this special board event meeting and for all the parents that are calling in to voice their concerns. My questions would be in regards to how are we addressing students who we see might be having special needs or we might need extra help, especially for those parents, those students who are not doing well on the virtual learning. It feels a bit upsetting to hear that some parents do feel that sports have been prioritized over education. I do think that we need to have more activities done for our students who are not involved in sports. My children are not involved in sports. They're not very, besides the martial arts, which they're forced, apparently they're forced to do. They don't really do much of any other type of activity. So I really think that, you know, I know the weather is kind of, it's not, you know, it's getting colder, so it's not really possible to do it still. Or maybe we can squeeze some events, outdoor events, if we feel that that is safer. Because I do think that the socialization and the interaction and that definitely affects the mental, the mental fatigue as well. My children are not flourishing very well on the virtual learning. And I'm just curious to see what other options we are giving or what other supports we are giving our families who financially can't do private, private, private school or enroll their children in other programs and that are struggling. And I don't know, Dr. Cascone probably knows I'm going to ask this, but is how is the progress on the Rutgers program for the community outreach for our parents who are not, who do not speak English as their first language? I wanna know how those families are being helped and how our special needs families are being reached out to and supported. Because along with the education and the sports aspect, I think that a lot of help and support needs to be given for mental and emotional help as well. And I think that it's a little harder for families to reach out. And I think that the school should maybe offer something. Or I really honestly don't know. Maybe we're not thinking outside of the box enough. And I think that I do, I'm glad to hear.
Melinda, did we lose you? I think we lost connection with Melinda.
Thank you.
Mike D. Mike, I have you as an older version of Zoom. I'm gonna promote you to a panelist and then you're gonna be on video for like a hot second, then I'm gonna stop the video for you. I think the students Chromebooks don't like, don't like the panelist. If you can, give us your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Mike Dan Miller, 10 Greenwood Ave.
Okay, go ahead.
I just have one easy question. If we, whether we go virtual or not, is West Orange High going to change the start time? I heard that maybe it was gonna switch to 9:30. And if we opt not to go virtual, will remote learning start at 9:30? That's all.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna switch your computer over again.
Thanks.
Okay, next, while we're doing that, we have Kevin Brady. If you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Hi.
How you doing? Can we have your name and address for the record, please?
Sure. Kevin Brady, 60 Wellington Avenue. Thanks. So first of all, thanks to the board members for asking some great questions, especially Cheryl and Ken for asking questions of parents who wanna see their children's needs better addressed and other children's needs better addressed, wanted to hear asked. I had a statement ready, but as I listen, listen to the comments in the beginning, I'm basically hearing that we can never go back safely. Dr. Kelly referred to 100% safe, which will never exist. Our public health nurse referred to a 28 day quarantine period, which I haven't heard any public health expert refer to yet. So that's brand new to me. In August, we were told that measures needed to be taken to get the buildings ready. In November, we're told that the age of the buildings is now a factor. Well, the age of the buildings wasn't gonna change between August and November, except they just got older. So I don't know how that comes into play now. So I guess now they're less safe. Even though we took all those measures, I don't understand that at all. Also, today, the public health nurse basically told us that the number of daily cases reported by the town isn't even accurate. When a board member asked a question about the number being four, it's given for a period of time. It can't be changing. So tomorrow we'll get a new number and that'll be the number of cases since the four was reported. So this is getting ridiculous. The number of children that's safe to be in person in school right now is greater than zero. We owe it to our children to stop preventing them from being in class. I realize we're not gonna be able to accommodate everybody in the district, but this all or nothing approach has to end. We need to get the children that most need to be back in class, in class. We decided not to go back when it was safer and delay until November. So I wanna ask point blank, are we awaiting a time when it's 100% safe, as Dr. Kelly mentioned earlier? Or are we balancing the risk of remaining virtual? Because there's risks to that as well. Also, since it seems apparent we won't be going back anytime soon, will the district consider modifying the calendar so we can have school over the summer months when it's safer? Because we're gonna be stuck in the same position for 2021 and 22. The study from Spain tested, it ran a model and it tested if 24 students are in the classroom with no precautions, up to 12 students could be infected if they were in there for two hours. With masks on, it drops to five. With proper ventilation and a break every hour to recirculate, recirculate the air, drops to one. The state's now allowing spectators at indoor sporting events. We're prioritizing everything over school. People outside of the school are pottying while also participating in a number of other activities. So the community's not gonna decrease this on their own. Can we get data to show that it's spreading faster and people are getting sicker? Because that's another new thing that I'm hearing. Early on, the sickest people were getting tests. So to compare the number of children sick today versus sick in April is a bit of an apples and oranges comparison. And to the folks that are saying that, you know, to the parents that wanna go to private school, that's their choice, that's not really good enough. We believe in public school and we wanna be able to utilize them, not be forced into choosing to go private or move. I realize I'm out of time, so I'll stop there. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Dr. Janice Johnson Diaz. Actually, I'm sorry, they just lowered their hand while I was saying their name. Next, we have Anna.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Just your name and address for the record, please.
Anna Mark, 3 Cannon Street. I'm a West Orange resident and my daughter was supposed to start kindergarten at Redwood this year. But because my husband and I are essential workers, we actually work in healthcare. We were not able to stay home full time to do remote learning with our child. We would have been able to adjust our work schedules for a hybrid model, but not full remote. I know several other families like mine who, because of this reason, withdrew from West Orange School District. And right now, my daughter is attending in-person kindergarten at a daycare. I understand that cases are rising in West Orange and in New Jersey, but we did expect this to an extent. Most scientists and doctors were saying that we would expect a second wave in the fall and we knew that the holidays would be at this time. However, I think we have a lot of data now that the risk of transmission in schools that take precautions like masks and six foot distancing is very low. We see that there are many private schools and daycares that have been open in person in New Jersey and have done so successfully. Yes, there have been times when there was a case at school, but usually the infections happen outside of school and the cases do not spread within the school. We have testing data from New York City where they are doing random testing of students and teachers and their positivity rate is very low, lower than the rest of the city. And New York City also has had increased cases. But the testing shows that it largely does not spread within schools because everyone is wearing masks. If the Department of Health feels that no, that any in-person school is not safe, why are the private schools open? Governor Murphy has repeatedly said that schools are not spreading the virus, that it's mostly happening in household gatherings. We also have the example of Lakewood Township in New Jersey, which was initially the epicenter of the spike a few weeks ago, but as far as I'm aware, they did not close their school and they were still able to get their cases down in their town. So I don't think that it's necessary to keep schools closed. I know some districts have postponed until January, but we know that in January, the virus will still be here. So I don't think that delaying the entire district is the right thing to do. I know some districts have started in phases with the younger kids going in first. So maybe that is something to consider, but ultimately, it's about giving parents a choice. The parents who want virtual will still have the option and the parents who don't have that option, like, like me, have had to take their kids out of, of public school. So it really comes down to giving parents a choice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have Candace Sparks. If you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Yeah. Good evening, everyone. And thanks for having this, this conversation and this emergency meeting. I live at 15 Crystal Avenue in West Orange. I wanna first congratulate you, Dr. Cascone, on the amazing job that you've done and you have been incredibly proactive. And I do believe that West Orange is a model for the nation as far as preparedness, the feasibility studies and everything that we've done to get to this point thus far. Today, nationwide, there's 100,000, 100,000 confirmed cases across the country. So the bell curve is definitely rising. We're not flattening the curve by any, by any stretch of the imagination of where we should be, especially with flu season. There's no difference, there's no difference between flu symptoms and COVID-like symptoms. And now we're, we're embarking on a flu season. So you have children that'll have to be tested prior to going into school for fevers. So you won't know the difference. So that's number one. To return to school on Monday would be a logistical nightmare on so many levels. There will be delays. So parents will probably complain about that. The overall responsibility and the safety of our children relies on us as parents. I am a part of the Redwood community where I am part of the pandemic response team and I'm also on the PTA board. I'm, I'm the head of fundraising. So we've had to adjust our business model into a virtual environment as well. Pandemic of such only comes about one, every 100 years. And so this was expected years ago. And now it's upon us. I'm going to agree with a lot of Jeremiah's comments that safety is the utmost concern right now. There's a lot of super spreader events going on within this community. Cheerleading being one of them, football games. There, this is not a normal environment that we're in. So we all have to make adjustments. All of our plates are full. Our teachers are overloaded and there are assessments being done. And they're underway right now in the school district, as we all know. For parents, this is primarily for the parents, for parents that need additional resources. You need to take some time out and have some one-on-ones with your teachers. You need to take an extra moment at night to make sure your children are at the appropriate reading level. We have to take accountability for our children. I look at it and my perspective is, is that I'm looking at this moment in time where I get to be with my children 24/7 and offer the necessary support and resources that they need so that their mental well-being is taken care of.
Thank you.
Am I finished? Am I out of time?
Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Thank you. Next, we have Katie. I'm sorry, I don't know how to pronounce your last name and I don't wanna butcher it. But Katie, if you follow the prompt on your screen? I think it's Sickler?
Yes.
Okay.
This is Catherine Sickler at 66 Cobain Terrace. So I wanna reiterate some of the other comments here that West Orange really as a community needs to prioritize opening of our public schools. We've waited a really long time for this. The public health experts are pretty clear that schools are not a driver of increase in infections. And even within our own public schools, we have had cases, but we have not had spread. And I think that's really important to note. And I don't think that we should be punishing our children or making this an all or nothing approach. There, we could potentially be opening elementary schools, for example, which are the lowest risk. We've spent a lot of money upgrading the ventilation so that we could open those schools. Additionally, the other comment I wanna ask is, you know, I know our, our health department expert has left, but I'm curious to know whether they had only approached the West Orange Public Schools to remain closed or whether they had also approached Golda Ahk, Seton Hall Prep, JCC, YMCA, Tudor Time, Goddard School, Next Gen Learning Solutions, Playhouse Nursery School, any of the other in-person learning institutions that have been open since the beginning and either requested that they close or I guess in the case of Seton Hall Prep, remain closed and not reopen. Or whether it was just our public school students that would be impacted by this request from the Health Department. And really, I think, you know, just in closing, the, the previous commenter had said something about the parents need to be responsible for their child's reading level, which I find to be completely ridiculous. That is clearly the responsibility of our public education system to be educating our children. And I do not think we should be expecting parents to know what their child's reading level is or really even know what their child's reading level should be. You know, that, that was, to me, that was just a ridiculous comment. And, and we're really in a place right now where, where this has gotten really ridiculous. You know, we need to be prioritizing the opening of schools. There are students that absolutely need to be in school and those students need to be prioritized. Whether those are special ed, whether those are kindergartners, first graders, second graders, you know, our youngest learners, we need to prioritize them. It is relatively safe. And, you know, the data shows that it is really safe for those kids to be in school wearing masks with our expensive ventilation upgrades and they should be in school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Lauren Weinchenk. If you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Yes, hi, my name is Lauren Weinchenk. I'm at 6 Curry Lane in West Orange. I would like to thank the board also for this emergency meeting. I work in healthcare. I work at a local hospital. And yes, you are correct, the numbers are rising. But the rate of transmission from staff to staff when masked is actually absolutely zero. Not to scare anybody, but our nurses do have COVID. They contracted in the community. They do come to work before they know the outcome of their testing and there has been zero cases of transmission while they've been at work prior to knowing their test results. And we are in office spaces that are smaller than classrooms. My daughter attended camp this summer with 300 kids and probably 150 staff. She took the bus. It's a 45 She took the bus. It's a 45-minute bus ride. She was masked. There were zero cases of transmission within the camp for the entire six-week session. We, my husband and I both work. I work out of the home. He works in the home. We are spending a fortune on childcare. If my children were in school, they would be masked. Precautions would be taken. You have kids in pods. They are not masked in these pods. I see them. I see the pictures. Our children are having playdates outside of school because they need the socialization. They are not masked. They are not masked at the sports. Again, as a, as a mother whose children play sports, my daughter played soccer, there were not masks there at the time. Now, thank God, there were no rates of transmission, but that's where the issues are coming from outside of the schools. To my knowledge, daycares for essential workers have been open since March. There were zero cases of child-to-child or staff-to-child transmission in daycares where children under two were not wearing masks. Private schools are open, camps are open, daycares are open, the JCC is open for extended learning, as is the YMCA. Those places cannot close because essential workers need childcare for their children. So I'm not suggesting that. But you cannot show me that those children are at any higher risk because nothing has happened. Our kids need to return to school. My son is doing actually very well on Edison Virtual. He enjoys it. So that's, I see both sides of it. He would never go back if he didn't have to. My daughter is floundering. She needs the interaction. She needs to be in school. I work with doctors. I work with nurses in neighboring towns. Their kids are in school. Livingston, Short Hills, West Caldwell, West Essex, they all send their kids to school. So if your healthcare professionals are sending their kids to school, it should be safe. And I really think we have to prioritize that. Really, we need to stop having the parties, stop having the indoor gatherings. That's where the problems are happening. Otherwise, it's not going to stop. The schools have been closed since March. The cases continue to rise. So therefore, schools are not the issue and they are not the problem. I congratulate our teachers. I think they're doing a great job as well, but schools need to open.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Next, the Zoom name is just labeled as Denise. If you can follow the prompt on your screen, please. The Zoom name Denise, no last name. If you can follow the prompt that's on your screen? Okay, I'm going to come back.
Myself, sorry. Nice Plaza, 9 Rocker Street. So I'm not really calling to speak to the closing or the opening of schools. I more so have a more so general comment. I'm having a hard time. Not that it's necessarily for me to understand, but I'm having a hard time understanding why when one knows that language and behavior is inevitably emulated by one's own children, why anyone would not censor themselves when speaking to mature circumstances? Commenters on previous Zoom calls as well as one earlier on this call have seemingly had a hard time practicing self-control when expressing their emotions during the public comments sessions. I understand that emotions are running high, but if we want to protect our children's wellbeing, one of the things we should start with is curbing the negative speech while in our children's presence at least regarding school closings and virtual learning. Furthermore, why anyone would have their young children listening on these calls where topics of very sensitive nature are being covered is beyond me. This is just a personal opinion, personal feeling. But I, for, for the parents that are, that are speaking to the fact that their children are having a hard time understanding the situation entirely, I just feel that as a parent, it is a parent's job to shield their children as much as possible, especially those of a younger age. So I just wanted to comment on that. And the second thing, some, a parent called in and spoke about the, she doesn't know how they're doing the reading assessment. Although my child's teacher didn't necessarily call out that she was performing or conducting a reading assessment earlier in the week or last week rather, on Raz Kids, my child was assigned a reading assignment where she had to record, I guess on Raz Kids, that there's the capability of being able to record oneself. So she had to hit the record button on Raz Kids, read the assignment. She wasn't able to pause or anything like that. She had to read it in completion. She then had to answer the questions that were posted after she, she finished reading the assignment. And I assumed that this was, you know, some sort of assessment. And I guess that's it. And as usual, thank you to Dr. Kasten and the board for everything that you guys are doing to try to get everyone back to school as safely as possible.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, the Zoom name is listed as Mr. Al and Mrs. Dawn Olivares. And it's actually an older version, so I'm going to be bringing you over. You will be on screen very shortly and I'm going to turn off your camera.
Hi, can everybody hear?
Yes, thank you.
Hi, this is Alfred and Donna Olivares, 15 Cliff Street, West Orange, New Jersey. First of all, I'd like to thank the board and Dr. Kasko for allowing us to have this ability to have this conversation. I do want to make more of a comment and concern regarding what we have heard tonight about the schools not opening. What it looks like at least is one, when we first sat here several months ago, we were giving them a lot of, a lot of data and data that seemed to be very neutral data. I think the first thing is that in this session, I think the both experts that were brought in were very one-sided and didn't come prepared with real facts. I think that the folks that have been speaking and asking questions and making comments, and thank you for all the healthcare workers out there that are doing what they need to do to support us as a society. Thank you for that and also for providing real data and real facts. I would urge that the board request that we get a more neutral base of information that really calls into that number one, schools are not a proven source of the spread. Two, if we are concerned about the source of spread and we are saying that the schools are not safe, I agree with the statements that then they'll never be safe. One, we said that students will be wearing masks and they'll be socially distancing, things that are kind of the mandate today. If we need to go above and beyond, that one point I recall that we were talking about potentially putting clear visors in front of the students' chairs in order to help not wear masks. Maybe it's time to consider that. Also, if we're looking at maybe increasing the distance of the students, maybe there is an opportunity for giving us the right to choose to send our children and then evaluating how many kids will be sent to school, which will also increase the social distancing. I would request that the board also reach out to other districts and other schools surrounding the area because my daughter does go to dance. She's in a dance studio with masks and there have been zero transitions since that opening happened. And I would also request that these, for parents that like ourselves that have students that have, you know, an IEP of some sort, there is a more proactive or add more resources to support these parents during this time. It's very clear that there's not enough work for the children during the day and the evaluation of the program that's been done to this point may, needs to be evaluated and evaluated quickly. Thank you very much for the opportunity to express our feelings and please all be safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. And next we have Melissa Butler. If you can please, oh, you're actually also on an older version of Zoom. I'm going to be promoting you to panelist, so don't do anything with your computer. Okay, Melissa, I'm just going to turn off your video for you. And okay, if we can have your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Melissa Butler, 9 Rock Spring Avenue. You can hear me, right?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, perfect. I just want to thank you, Dr. Kasten, for being so transparent and utilizing the recommendations of both Dr. Kelly and the health professionals. I am an administrator in a neighboring district and I know many people have been speaking about neighboring districts, saying that every one of them is open, but we have actually been 100% virtual since September. I know it was also mentioned by one of the Board of Ed members that is not rigorous enough in the classes. I want to say on the record, being in education for 20-plus years, I know that the fifth grade team at St. Cloud is definitely keeping the learning at a very rigorous level and they are absolutely on track with the current New Jersey student learning standards. A benchmark reading assessment has been conducted. A benchmark writing assessment has been conducted. Several benchmark mathematic assessments and summative assessments have been conducted. And many social studies and science rapid up assessments have been conducted. So I just wanted to share that, that I know that many have been sharing that it may not be happening, but I wanted to showcase that it is happening at St. Cloud and the fifth grade team and not all schools in our neighboring school districts are 100, are not in hybrid. My district is 100% virtual and does not have a plan to go back until at least January. So I respect whatever decision that you make, Dr. Kasten, along with the Board of Ed. I know you have the ultimate decision because I know from the get-go, when you started in the district, you have always been transparent and kept the kids at the forefront as the top priority. So I respect whatever decision you make. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. And next we have oh, we have Dr. Janice Johnson Diaz.
Yes, I am here. Thank you so much. I accidentally lowered my hand.
Oh, no, it's okay.
Um, so I want to thank you for having this meeting. It's
Doctor, I'm sorry. We just need your name and address for the record.
Janice Johnson Diaz, 272 St. Cloud. So I want to thank you so much for having this meeting. Like everyone else, I think it's been really elucidating. I have a few comments and then one suggestion. A couple of comments. It seems to me that the experiences of those who have younger children are contrastly different from the experiences of those of us who have high school kids. And so I just want to bear that distinction in mind because there's been a lot of talk that assumes that we're all in the same bucket and some people are, their children have specialized needs. Some people are in small schools and then the high school really is quite a different character because there's so many kids there and the hallway and the experiences are quite different. So I want to note that I have a high schooler and so I speak from that experience even though my child has gone through the entire school system thus far. I do recommend that we consider really the needs of special needs children very seriously and how that might be impacting their learning experiences and the learning experiences of their children and give real comprehensive thought about how we can attend to their needs. The second thing I'd like to comment on is the need for mental health days during this pandemic. As it stands right now, students, at least, you know, my child and many other caregivers that I work with, children are going to school on Zoom for four hours. They have a lot of assignments that also keeps them on Zoom and there really is a mental exhaustion to the experience. And so I'd like to encourage that the school district considers youth mental health as they think about this and institute if possible that as a part of the criteria in terms of days off, like we have sick days for physical days, that there needs to be some mental health consideration. The final thing that I would like to suggest for the caregivers in West Orange and for the board in particular, is that we get a much more robust understanding of public health. Public health is not about choice. Much of the conversation so far that we've had is people talk about the choice of their kids, the choice to do what they want to, the choice to do that. This individual level consideration is the reason why we continue to have a spread of COVID-19. We must think about broader health concerns. We must realize that our fates are tied. And as a person and as a person who is a black person in America and who has black children and a high school that is filled with black and brown kids, we know that our community will suffer the most if they get COVID. And that ought to be a part of the consideration. Our fates are tied too. And so we, I implore you to consider us as you think about what's good for just you. Public health response, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have, the name is just labeled as George. If you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Hi, good evening. Hi, I'm Oceana Judge, 45 Sun Terrace.
Okay.
Okay. My concern is Zoom fatigue. I do have an I, I school student who to a great extent, she has been doing very well, but sometimes you see that she's getting tired and the Zoom fatigue is affecting her. Also, I'm concerned also with regards to the mental health of students. I do also have a special ed child and definitely the teachers have been very, very helpful. And he has counseling and other things, but also, and he goes, he goes to school in person now, which is very good. But sometimes I still have the struggle, struggle with him with regards to the concentration and all. So my own concern is what can the school district do with more, especially with regards to the high school student and with regards to Zoom fatigue and their mental health? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Lisa Brady. If you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
I'm Lisa Brady, 60 Wellington Avenue. And I believe our children deserve to have their voice heard since this decision revolves around their wellbeing. And I have somebody here who wants to say something.
I'm Abby Brady. I'm eight years old. I go to Hazel Avenue School and I'm in third grade. I think I've been, I am excited to go to school because I think that we will have so much fun and we've been working on Zoom and our teachers have been getting us ready. I also wanted to say that we, I've been doing dance, soccer and hockey and I've been wearing my masks, doing all of those the whole time.
Did you want to say?
Hi, I'm her older brother and I think the same thing. Me too.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay, thank you. And next we have, it's just listed as Susan. If you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, my name's Susan Duarte. I live at 14 Cohen Place. I have a child that's a senior in high school. And I just, it's pretty obvious that the hybrid model is not going to be executed on Monday. So I just have a couple of questions. Will the start time be put back to 7:30 AM? You know, so that, and, and will students be advised of that, you know, prior to like Sunday night? I'm also really concerned about the fact that the students are only meeting with their teachers twice a week. It really poses a significant disadvantage to students that are juniors and seniors because they'll be off to college before we know it and they will never have time to make up what the, the learning time that they're losing as a result of only being with their teachers twice a week, not being on a regular schedule that they do the ad drop schedule normally in high school. So I'm really concerned as with that. Additionally, the, the AP classes, there is really going to be a problem because they're only learning half the amount of stuff. How can they possibly be prepared for these AP exams in May if they're not getting, you know, the, the education in these classes that, that they really should, should be getting? So I, you know, I'm concerned about the learning time that high school students are getting, you know, with, with You know, with, with this uh, remote model. So. That's it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next we have Brent Scott. If you can please follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for uh, having me. It's Brent Scott, 75 Nestro Road. And I first want to uh, thank the superintendent and the members of the board. Uh, I want to congratulate the superintendent Cascone on doing such a great job. And I just want to give you guys some positive feedback. Uh, both of our sons, Parker and Cameron are attending virtual and we selected virtual for, for the rest of the school year. We believe their teachers are doing a very good job under the circumstances. My wife and I both teach at the college level. And I want to say to parents who are, who are calling, uh, yeah, it doesn't always translate exactly uh, online as it does from being in the classroom. I would much rather, and I teach graduate studies. I'd much rather be in class with my students. My classes are usually three hours. The idea of talking for three hours on a Zoom call is, is a little daunting and no one wants to hear that. Because I, I tell my students, you, you don't want to hear me talk for three hours. I don't want to hear me talk for three hours. So it doesn't translate exactly. And I think a lot of parents need to understand that uh, the teachers are doing the best they can. And it's not just your child's health, it's other children's health as well. I want to echo Dr. Diaz. Uh, and minority children face a particular issue there as we all know. But I really want to give a good shout out to uh, to the teachers of West Orange School who are teaching, who are teaching our kids and they're doing a very good job teaching our kids. We are very satisfied with the education that our children is getting, are getting. Under these circumstances, uh, it is very much unfortunate that there is this economic divide. My wife and I have the ability to work at home and we're at home with our children as well. And a lot of parents don't have that opportunity or that ability. And that's very unfortunate. Perhaps there's something uh, the board and the school district can do to help with childcare in some way or form. Some hybrid situation or partnership with a nonprofit organization or something of that nature to help uh, the many parents of West Orange who unfortunately can't work from home and be there with their kids all the time. Uh, but I do believe that the decision, um, that the decision will be made to not go ahead with the hybrid classes. We weren't going to be sending our children regardless, because we don't think it's um, safe at all. And uh, I, we know you guys have a tough job ahead of you. And we just want to say that uh, we're very satisfied with what is happening with the online learning, with the virtual learning. And we believe the teachers are doing the very best they can. And um, just thank you guys for that. And wanted to put that out there and give you guys some positive feedback. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Jesse Porta. If you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Uh, Dr. Gascon and the board, uh, I want to thank you, uh, not just for making the right decision now, but.
Jesse, I'm sorry, I have to interrupt you. We just need your name and address for the record.
Six Carter Road, um, and I'm a teacher at the high school. And uh, and again, I, I want to thank everybody for making the right decision, even though it's not a popular decision or an easy decision every step along the way. You know, listening to the community speak, I, I want, I, I can't speak for all teachers, but I, I, I know that my colleagues and I truly want to be back in school. We want to be working with your kids in the typical fashion of having the joy in our classroom, seeing the smiles on the face, watching their learning take place. Because a, as a career, being a teacher, one of the most rewarding things is, is that individual relationships that you build with our students. And it has been tough doing so online at, at a virtual distance. But it's not safe to do that. And it's, it's out of love for your children, for this community. A community that I, my family and I have all gone through the West Orange Public Schools. It, it is difficult to see this, but it is the right thing for the community. You know, to echo what Dr. Diaz said, our community will suffer the most. If you look at our demographics, if you look at national averages, the disproportionate effect that this disease has on communities of color, of, of brown and Latino individuals. This, this is decimated communities. It's already decimated our community. There are over 180 residents of West Orange who have lost their life to this. And that's something we can't lose sight of. And while, while it's, it's, yes, your kids are excited about the prospect of returning to the classroom. The classroom is not going to look like what they imagine it to look like now. And for parents, you have this romanticized notion that returning to school a few days a week is going to somehow make up for, for um, what you see as, as an inconvenience in your lives. This is something larger than any one individual. It is about our community. It is about our children. We talk about their health and wellbeing, their, their ability to socialize. People are giving examples about, you know, my kids still play soccer. Yes, outside. When numbers during warmer weather were, were much lower than what they're growing to now. Opening a major vector point in our community at this point would be unwise. And I think, I, I can't commend the board or, or both Dr. Cascone and, and this De Menendez that you, you have made a hard choice, but you have made the right choice in protecting this community, protecting the faculty, and most importantly, protecting these kids. Because eh, the last thing we want to see is a kid have to deal with bringing home the virus to grandma and grandpa during the holidays. And what would the long-term impact of that be? So thank you. I know it's not easy, but we really do appreciate that you're making the right decision and the hard choices.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Julie Matts. If you can follow the prompt on your screen.
Hello, I'm Julie Matts. I am um, the librarian at Western High School for the past two years. And prior to that, I was at Gregory Elementary for seven years. And I'd like to start off by saying that I have just the full confidence in um, our district leadership and also in our W O E A leadership. I uh, I want to speak directly to the parent and her son or daughter who um, was so concerned with the fact that um, their teacher could say that they did not want to come back to school, yet they missed them. Those two things are true. I um, am teaching currently now freshman orientation. We are welcoming freshmen into, into schools. And I am so excited when I can see the faces of the Gregory students that I had taught when they were in first grade. And now they're freshmen. It's so exciting. I'd like to jump through the screen to see them. And I can't. And I wish I could, but I can't because it's not safe. It's not safe for them and it's not safe for me. And it's not safe for all the reasons that have been stated earlier today. We, we are an imperfect system. And we are working toward being better and we will be better. But it is certainly not true that your teachers do not want to go back to school. They certainly do. Why wouldn't they? That's what they signed up for. And in addition, I'd just like to add that I've had some conversations with AP teachers. And I know there was some concern about that. I think our AP students are doing just fine. They're highly motivated and their teachers are, you know, are, are, are working in tandem with them. It's not the same thing across the board. It's not easy. And as this goes on for a longer time, we are going to have to find ways to address all the needs of all of our students. But we are doing the best we can where we are. And so I want to thank you. I want to thank the parents for all their concern. And I want to thank, I want to thank um, uh, the Board of Education and also our W O A membership. I am so proud to be part of this and I certainly wish it was different. And I know that in some time it will be. So thank you very much for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Deb Cohen. If you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Uh, Deb Cohen, I teach at the high school. I'm in my 21st year of teaching in the district. And I do want to thank both Dr. Cascone and the board. I have sent numerous emails. I've gotten responses on, and information. And he's been willing to listen to what our concerns are and what we say. But I just want to bring up a couple of things. I am a teacher and a mom and I get it. I am very grateful. I have two teenage boys um, that can be left home. If I go in, I did go in periodically um, in September and October. You know, so I do get it. But I can also tell you that my sons have sent me pictures from their classroom. They're hybrid in Madison, where the temperature is down to 48, 49 degrees as all the windows are open to help with ventilation. It's not going to be sustainable. They're trying to figure out how to do it. You can't have the heat pumping and the windows open. I don't think we need our windows wide open with a lot of the ventilation, but it is going to be a reality. And the ventilation is still not 100%. It's a thousand times better than it was. And we appreciate what you've done, but just be aware of that. Um, they have quarantined the soccer team at the high school in Madison. They've, so sports sometimes do have issues. I can tell you um, last week I stopped every single one of my classes midstream because I could just tell they needed that mental health. And we had a very frank discussion of how much this sucks. And it sucks as an adult. It sucks as a kid. And we all want to be back in school. I've never seen high schoolers so eager to be back in school and want to see people. But we talked about what in school would look like at the high school. And just to give you an idea, I created a spreadsheet because they sent us the list so that we could do this. I will have on average zero to four students in a classroom and the other 20 on Zoom. The students in the classroom will be six feet apart. They will be masked. There will be no group work. There will be no sharing of materials. I teach photography. I teach electronics and I teach a class of, for the autistic and intellectually disabled students on Intro to Engineering and Technology. Last year we built birdhouses with those kids, but it is hand over hand, close proximity. We are making the best of it. The kids are engaged. It's not what I do. I know they need to be in school. But I think that the health and safety of the kids and the parents at home and the teachers need to be taken into consideration. In-person is not going to suddenly fix everything with the hybrid model. It's not going to suddenly mean group projects. It's not going to mean that my kids are going to get to, you know, build things necessarily. And I appreciate that, you know, this is the respect that's there. And I will just close on, I'm the liaison in Madison to the Board of Health for Town Council. They're looking at making the same recommendation there, that it's just not with everybody inside. It's, it's not going to work. And I think we just need to realize that it's unfortunate we couldn't come in in September because of the ventilation issues. The district did what it needed to do to help bring those ventilation issues back up so where we could. But now it's cold and now it's window, when the, getting ready to be winter and the numbers are taking a huge upticks. Last thing, 8.2% is the positivity rate in New Jersey right now. All right. So it's going up and it's going to be interesting to see um, where it falls. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Lisa B. If you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Hi, good evening, everyone.
Hi, if we could just have your name and address for the record, please.
Sorry, Lisa Bennett, 34 Mountain Avenue.
Thanks.
And okay, so I'm basically calling because, I, I mean, I'm getting jumping off because I have two high school students. And one's a sophomore and one's a senior. We had first opted to do the hybrid. And um, since there have been upticks, uh, we decided about, I guess a month ago to go for remote. And I do get it, especially with younger kids, how so many people are upset that they're, you know, their kids are missing out on, in school instruction. But I do want to give a shout out to the teachers, saying that I think everyone has been working really hard. Making this work. And I think Dr. Cascone and um, the other administrators have done an amazing job through all this. And nothing's going to be perfect and no one's, not everyone's going to be happy with what happens. And I think we have to err on the side of caution. Along with that, I want to say that I feel like the workload for my children who are in all honors in AP classes is very rigorous, uh, maybe even too much at this point. Fridays definitely need to be looked at, the asynchronous days. Because the deadline of 2:15 is just, most, most Fridays is not workable. When um, one of my kids has three labs and also has classwork from other, has work to do from other classes that's due. So um, that definitely should be looked at. But um, overall, I feel like this is, this has been great. I'm so happy that you pulled everyone together to talk about this. But I think that you're, you know, if you do lean towards getting rid of the hybrid and postponing it till January or February, I think that's probably in the best interest of, of everyone's health. So that's all I want to say.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Tez Roro. If you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Good evening, Tez Roro, 24 Hutton. Thank you all for calling this meeting uh, to the superintendent, the Board of Education, educators, parents, everyone who's showing up. Thank you. Um, I first want to say that I do not envy any of your positions uh, today or this season at all. It's uh, you're ma, you're having to make some tough choices and often going against the grain in order to uphold a higher purpose, which may not be very visible to a lot of us now because we're living in our day-to-day struggles. Uh, and that takes an immense amount of courage. Um, so thank you for that. And I just want to remind too, that this is Dr. Cascone's um, first time being a superintendent. And I bet he didn't um, expect any of, you know, this to happen. And so um, I've been very pleased with the level of communication we've been getting. Any major changes has been um, communicated to us. In fact, um, you know, in some social media groups, I hear that the communication may be even overwhelming, but I'm all for too much communication versus not. So I want to say thank you for that. When I heard that some neighboring towns were extending at the beginning of hybrid because uh, they didn't get to finish uh, some of the air quality, I was proud that our um, district, you know, was ahead of that, right? You know, the fact that the numbers are increasing, that's not something that, you know, any district has control over. But I did want to note that. I did also want to highlight what Dr. Janice Johnson mentioned about the mental health aspect. Just for context, I have a, a third grader who's going to Gregory. For the most part, he's doing well. He manages. There are days when he wakes up and he just wishes, mama, I just, I just want things to be normal. When is the day that I can go back full, right, without having to wear a mask? And so there are those days. And I've offered, you know, if you wanted to speak to uh, the counselor at school. Um, and he didn't want to. And that same day, coincidentally, his teacher, uh, Ms. McGuire, God bless her. She, she set up something called snack and chat. And he was so excited. He told me, he said, you know, I can eat snack, you know, in front of the screen. And I can talk to my friends and that's all he needed. So that got me thinking. Maybe the counselors can do something like that, right? Where kids are okay to eat and drink and just talk and they're not muted. There's no real rules and they could just be and, and socialize. Maybe that's something we can do. The other question I have is, this is more of technical, is um, I know the phone books have timeouts and that's been an issue for my son. I wonder if that's something that the tech department can help us. Um, and since I have everybody's attention here, I do want to let you know that the uh, West Orange Council of PTA's will have an event on uh, November 18th, uh, something called PT Midbester, uh, Midbusters. So yeah, look out for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Next we have Michaela Bennett. If you can follow the prompt on your screen, please. Michaela, if you can follow the prompt on, oh, there you go.
I'm here, I'm here. Sorry. Um, thank you. So I just really wanted to.
Michelle, I'm sorry, just name and address for the record.
Oh, sorry, sorry, so sorry. Michaela Bennett, Old Indian Road. Um, I really just wanted to share a, um, a couple of thoughts. I wasn't actually going to say anything. But it was Dr. Diaz that prompted me to raise my hand. And in the time in between, um, I really just wanted to share, number one, thank heaven. This district is led by Dr. Cascone at this point. And thank heavens for our teachers. I hear a lot of individual anecdotal experiences um, from families who really want their um, children back in school. And I don't think anyone on this call doesn't want our children, our teachers, our staff back in the school. For those who prioritize getting their children back in the schools, I just want to acknowledge that I hear loss. I hear um, maybe in the unspoken words, loss that these families are expressing. And um, I really think that we should be considering trauma-informed care and trauma-informed schools, um, and the trauma-informed approach, which has six guiding principles, safety being the first. Trustworthiness and transparency being the second. Peer support being the third. Collaboration and mutuality being the fourth empowerment and choice. Culture, historical and gender issues being the last. As much as, um, individual families want their students back in school. No one wants illness, injury, or death to come to anybody. And that's really, I think, the paradox of all of this. The paradox of wanting to return to normal, but needing to stay home for safety. The paradox of wanting education for children, but in ways that ensure safety for everybody. And then the, with the little time that I have left, I just want to read something. Um, that was the guiding principle back in nineteen eighteen, nineteen nineteen, when this country faced pandemic. Um, schools had closed, most schools had closed for four months. And most people got behind how to mitigate a pandemic. And what was written then was that education in schools are important, but life and health are more important. And I really think we have to remember this, particularly when we're dealing with, um, making these very difficult decisions. So I really, I applaud you. I know I'm going over, but I applaud you for prioritizing safety. And maybe what we can do is focus on trauma-informed schools as we move forward for all the families that are experiencing loss.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Next, we have Aaron Kesselman. If you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Yes, hi, this is Aaron Kesselman at One Galway Court. I first off want to say thank you um, for my, you know, for my family that for the hard work and care over for our teachers. And that is not in question. We know that they are working to help make this experience as good as possible. During previous meetings, we have heard from many teachers about their fear and anxiety about going back in the classroom. I don't want to minimize that. We, of course, want to keep teachers as well as students safe. Is any part of this decision based on a lack of teaching staff to want to go back in the classroom or for safety reasons? It sounds like from many of the parents' comments, there isn't much uniformity regarding assessments from class to class across the schools. Is there a way to correct this? Is there a place for this? My daughter's at St. Cloud and I'm wondering why Spanish is the only special that has no live instruction. Is there a reason for this? If you're not going to be providing the metrics at which you are going to be reopening, will you at least give us a date at which you will reevaluate reopening? Parents want to know. Parents want to send their kids back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jennifer Paul. If you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Okay, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Just your name and address for the record.
My name is Jennifer Paul. I'm a teacher in the West Orange District for twenty years. And first I would like to thank the board and our administration for first and foremost, taking our health and safety into consideration. That of the faculty and of, of course, the children in our community with all the decisions that they have made so far. I still do have a couple of concerns with the ventilation. I know that part of what has been suggested to us is keeping windows open to help the ventilation system work even better than what we already have. And my fear is that as it does get colder, it's going to make a colder environment in the classroom, which will be less conducive to our learning. Um, I also have a question about the ducts and them or the vents functioning properly as needed. Because as it's been explained to us, they have to be running at full blast all of the time to properly filter the air, which we're grateful for having all of the new parts of the system. But that's going to make the rooms colder too, which will, even with our masks and things inevitably, I'm just afraid of other things like colds and children who are susceptible just because the room is colder. The other thing I wanted to say is that right now, all of our students have their own teachers and they have them consistently. So I'm teaching every day in the virtual model. And without a doubt, once we are in the buildings, it, that's not going to be happening on a daily basis. As we've seen in other districts with the inevitability of having to quarantine classes, buildings, whatever it is. Children will end up not having their own teachers all of the time. And I would personally much rather know that my students are having me provide education every day that isn't going to be interrupted than possibly interrupted due to this virus. And I thank the parents who have spoken about what they see in towns around, that there are places that they have been closed. Just look at Clifton. They went hybrid. They were open a few weeks, then they had many cases and closed. And we do want to be in our schools, in our buildings, more than anything. I am in love with the class that I have this year. I can't wait to see these kids in real life, but safety first. I thank you for putting public health first, as previous parents have stated, because I need my seven-year-olds to be as healthy as possible to learn with me on a daily basis. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me. Next, we have, uh, Kami. If you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Sure. Kami Seelo, uh, twenty-seven Clover Lane. I'm a teacher at West Orange High School. I want to thank our administration, the Board of Ed, uh, Dr. Cascone, because we are remote right now. Um, I guess tentatively until Monday, um, because of the pandemic. And I also want to thank our tech team and everybody who worked on creating such an amazing uh, virtual classroom for our district. Because I am, obviously I have family and friends who are in other districts and they don't have nearly the resources that we have created, um, for this, I mean, for this pandemic, our virtual classroom, which is working amazingly well. And, um, I am concerned about the health that comes first. Everybody's health comes first. Um, we lost Mr. Soriano, uh, one of our teachers. We have colleagues and we have families in town who have lost relatives. Okay, so this is of utmost importance is everybody's health and wellbeing. I understand that we've installed these ionizers and purifiers. But, and I was looking it up online, but I'm not sure what the efficiency is of these devices. Um, I don't know if they can sustain us alone. There are classrooms that don't even have windows. So there is a concern about everybody's health. Um, this is an illness, uh, for which there is no cure right now. So that is of utmost importance. Um, again, I don't know what the, uh, efficiency is of these new technologies. It has not been communicated. I don't know if there's something in writing that we could look at. But we are still scared. We are scared. We also have families. Um, we also have people at home or ourselves who are high risk. And again, there is no cure. So I believe in the virtual classroom that we have created. And I believe that, you know, we have, um, everything's been going very well so far. And there is definitely rigor because we still have students who aren't doing, you know, who aren't performing the way that we would want them to. Um, so the rigor is definitely there. But we do need to stay safe. And the origin of where, you know, the outbreaks come from does not matter. The fact is that we have cases in every building. There have been shutdowns. Our transportation system has been shut down. So all, I mean, if we go back, we're just going to go back for two days or three days, then shut down, go back and then shut down. And that is not a conducive classroom environment. What we have right now, because of what our district created, is very strong. And I believe we need to stick with that until it is safe for everyone to go back and we all want to be back.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Molly Eisen. Excuse me, if you can follow the prompt on your screen. Hi Molly, you there? I see that you have unmuted. Molly?
Can you hear me now?
There you go, okay.
Okay, sorry.
No, it's okay.
I don't know what was going on. So, um, this is Molly Eisen. I'm a teacher at Edison. And first I just want to start off and say thank you to Dr. Cascone and the board, uh, for having this difficult meeting tonight. Um, I really do not envy any of you. Um, my mom was on the Board of Ed in Glen Ridge for twelve years and she also says, you know, you get a lot of credit because this is definitely unprecedented and difficult right now. And I appreciate that we are not shying away from these difficult conversations as well. Um, also thank you for bringing in, uh, the scientific experts and listening to science, which is very important. Although I did find it a bit concerning that some people were discounting that. But anyway, I just want to speak for a minute on, um, the mental health of our students. Um, we've been hearing from a lot of parents tonight that they are concerned, uh, with their students' mental health and not being in the building and not having that checking in. I would like to reassure parents that this is happening. Um, we teachers are very careful to check in with our students. And when they are in front of us on Zoom, we are still able to pick up warning signs. We see the kid who's not speaking at all. We see the child who is turning their video off and not engaging. We see their body language. We all have days where we check in with the kids and say, listen, tell us what's going on, tell us what's on your mind. So parents, please know we care. It keeps us up at night. And it is definitely at the forefront of our minds as well. And I also want to say that teachers hesitation to go back to school is about protecting your children. I love my students. I tell them this every day and I get lots of I-Rolls because they're in sixth grade. So they, so, you know, pre-teens. But I love them. Most of the time I prefer, uh, their company to most adults. And I will do anything to keep them safe. And I truly believe right now that means staying remote. So we can all be safe and get through this with our lives. Again, thank you for having this discussion tonight and I am confident that you will make the right decision in the name of science and health.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Shane D. If you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Hi, hello.
Hi.
Uh, my name is Shane Dyak. I'm a teacher at West Orange High School. Um, so first off, I'd like to also thank Dr. Cascone and the board. Um, as a teacher and a parent of two young girls, um, I certainly understand the desire and urgency that many parents are feeling to return back to some semblance of normalcy. I've spent the, uh, the majority of my time for the past seven months, um, indoors, trying to adapt to a new way of providing meaningful learning experiences to my students while simultaneously raising a newborn, entertaining a three-year-old and taking classes to further my own education at Montclair State University. Early on, my, uh, my wife and I decided to keep our girls home from daycare despite what we knew would be a very difficult situation. Um, since then, my wife and I recently have, uh, sold our house in West Orange where we lived for five years. And we've been staying with family, um, until we can find a more permanent situation of residence. Um, the prospect of returning to in-person instruction has caused a lot of stress for both my, myself and my wife. Um, despite, despite the strong desire we both have to return to some, some feeling of normal, normalcy, whatever that word even really means at this point. Um, chief among these stresses is the possibility of bringing back this illness to my wife's elderly grandparents who are eighty-eight and ninety-two-year-old, uh, years old respectively. Um, and also bringing back this, this illness to my two young girls. While I'm fully aware that my situation and my concerns are, are not unique, uh, I can't help but feel that there is something to be gained from caution and reasoning. Uh, this means following our health experts and focusing on what we can do to provide for our kids currently, rather than what we are doing to take away from them and their education. Um, I could personally say regardless of whether I'm teaching in person or fully remote, I will continue to do my best to provide positive learning experiences for the students of West Orange. Uh, but as a teacher, um, but us teachers should not have to choose between the health of ourselves and our loved ones so that we could put food on our tables and provide health insurance for our families. Um, I know that this is not an easy decision and there is no right choice to be made regardless. There's no way to satisfy all parties. However, we need to take everything into account and make the best decision possible for both the community, the teachers and the students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have David Leach. If you can, please follow the prompt on your screen.
Uh, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Name and address for the record, please.
Um, hi, I'm David Leach. I'm a teacher at the West Orange High School. And, um, so, uh, I teach the computer science classes and I wanted to mention this because I think, I think, uh, a hundred percent virtual is going really well. Um, the kids are, for the most part, on target with exactly where we were last year. Um, and, uh, I did, I, I did do something this week where I kind of tried to prep them for the upcoming changes. And the reason is because there's like, there's, there's a couple of small logistical things that are actually, uh, harder with hybrid. For, for instance, like, um, when kids are working on programs at home, uh, they would have to like, you know, transport the files to school and work on them, uh, there and then back and forth to school. And, and the school and home, uh, compilers are not always necessarily the same. So there's, there's a bunch of small things and, and I'm pretty sure that, uh, I mean, I, I don't know, uh, firsthand, but I'm sure that other teachers might have issues with this too. Like, you know, um, transporting artwork to or from, uh, home, you know, might, uh, might create some logistical barriers to, uh, to going back to hybrid as well. But, um, but I did have the talk this week. And, um, and I mentioned that we are going to have to, um, handle those, uh, those issues with, for the programs. But, um, I also did mention about the room because it would be the, the first time that, uh, some of them would be in the room. And, um, I am in one of the rooms that, uh, in, in fact, I brought it up last week, but like I am in one of the rooms that, um, you know, does, does have a history with circulation. And, uh, we do have, um, in that room, we have, uh, three windows. Uh, two of them are actually taken by air conditioners because we have, you know, we have tons of computers, so they, they do generate heat. But, um, but the, the middle window does open and I, I plan on leaving that open. But the, the only heat source we have other than the computers themselves is, is actually another window unit. And I don't think it's going to put out enough heat to counteract the cold um, from leaving the window open just to, you know, to have the circulation make it, make it safe. So I did tell the kids to, to bundle up. And, um, and it might not be, I, I guess basically the exact words I said is a hoodie may not just cut it. So, um, and in saying that, you know, I do want to like, kind of paint the picture that school is going to be somewhat of a different experience. I mean, we are going to be, we are going to be masked. It is going to be cold. It, it might be a little uncomfortable. Um, so, you know, when you contrast that with the, with the images we have for traditional school, it, it might, you know, it, it might come as like a bit of a, a surprise and I wanted to make sure they were aware of that. And, um, the, the last thing I want to say is that like, um, you know, if the decision is hybrid, uh, I would do it. You know, if the decision is, uh, virtual, I would do it. Uh, um, but honestly, uh, you know, would, my, my dad does have congestive heart failure. And, and, you know, this specifically, it is, it is kind of a, an existing condition that, that's kind of rough, uh, with the virus. And, you know, my job would basically be determining whether I see my parents on Thanksgiving and Christmas. Anyway, uh, thanks for your time.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Patricia Rudy. If you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hi, hi, Patricia Rudy. I'm a teacher in, in district at Kelly. Um, I know I spoke last week at the meeting and I just want to say thank you for the vote to the board. Um, I know I spoke last week at the meeting, and I just want to say thank you for the vote to the board, Dr. Cascone, for considering health and considering and listening to the health experts. I know some people are doubting them, but they are the experts. They have that position. And thank you for listening to them and taking in their concerns and considerations. Um, I just like to speak to the, again, the virtual for one and virtual for all. I understand special needs students. I understand kindergarten students, first grade students, second grade students. They need a lot of help. They need a lot of support. They need to be in school. I understand that. But we also need to look at numbers. So please, when it's safe, when the numbers are low, then introduce those classes. Again, some of our students at Kelly and throughout the district, special needs have been in mid-October. Since then, her numbers have been going up. Luckily, as far as I know, they have been safe. A teacher the other day on our faculty meeting said it the best, who's been in there, and she said, how is her life different from anyone else's? So as you're considering to bring back in small groups, please consider that it's safe in the district. For the numbers, the numbers need to be down. The numbers need to be staying down, not on the rise like they are now. While we have staff in there who are going in, who are forced to take and decide whether or not they needed to take a leave before anybody else, or if they were going to put their life or their family's life at risk before any of us else had to. When the teacher said that the other day in our faculty meeting, it really hit home. I almost wanted to hug her through the computer because it really is, how is her life different from anyone else in the district? She's a special ed teacher. She loves being a special ed teacher, as we all do. We love being kindergarten teachers and first grade teachers. But please consider the numbers. When it's safe, we want to be back with our children. We want to see their faces. And to the parents that said, teachers might get on and say, we don't want to go back here, but we tell our students that. That's two totally different things. I want to see my students. I see them every day on Zoom. I want to see them in the classroom. It felt good to go in and get set up for hybrid last week. But then seeing the numbers and seeing the science and hearing the science, just please consider that it's safe for all, not just for some. Making some teachers go in and allowing others to stay home really puts teachers in a tough position. They may not be able to afford to take a leave because they have families to take care of. They want to teach their students. Just please consider the science and listen to the science. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jay Wecht, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, Jay Wecht, Roosevelt Middle School. This is my 26th year teaching English at Roosevelt. Uh, I'd, I'd be remiss if I didn't begin this by first thanking the board and Dr. Cascone and Mr. Mendez and Mr. Calabano and everyone else, uh, you know, at Central Office who have been making the very difficult decisions, the impossible decisions, the ones that you know is, they're not going to satisfy everybody. But it's been abundantly clear to me that it's been safety first from the get-go from everybody, uh, from Central Office, and I, I really appreciate that. And I can relate to that, actually, because, again, this is my 26th year. My, my 25 years previous to this, the first week of school, I started out by practicing fire drills, lockdown drills, evacuation drills. I told the kids, I can't teach you anything unless you're safe. So it's been safety first for me, you know, since I started in 1995. Uh, keeping that in mind, it's, it's abundantly clear that it's not safe yet. Uh, I lost my uncle to COVID three days ago. My aunt, who's the last of the Wecht generation, uh, you know, you know, of my father's ages, uh, she has COVID. The two grandchildren that they're, um, raising, they have COVID. Um, it's simply not safe yet. I live two towns away from West Orange in, in East Hanover. My son's high school, Hanover Park, just went, uh, hybrid about a week ago. Uh, uh, we got a call on Saturday that six of his friends have COVID. So, uh, I got in touch with his guidance counselor, and, uh, he is no longer hybrid. He's going to be all remote. So, uh, you know, my child's safety is first. I, I would love for him to be in the classroom, and I would love to have my students in front of me for real, the 80 children that I see every day, uh, in little boxes in front of, you know, on my screen. Um, but I know that they're safe, uh, because they're not in my classroom right now. So, um, when it is safe, then it's time to begin. Uh, until then, it's, it doesn't make sense to me to jeopardize the possibility of the safety of the children and the faculty and staff, uh, you know, with, with such an incredible risk when it's, when it's truly a matter of life or death. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Tracy Go. If you can follow the prompt on your screen, please. Nope, she lowered her hand. Okay, Judy Costanza. Sorry, Judy, Jody Costanza. Can you please follow the prompt on your screen?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Great. I'm Jody Costanza. I'm a high school biology teacher. Um, so as a teacher, I'm sad to hear that we may not be seeing our students physically. However, I'm also happy to hear that I will be able to see my students and their families kept safe, as well as my own family. Um, I miss the normalcy, and I have to agree with what, um, Jesse Porta said earlier. I miss seeing the students in person. However, I am grateful that the public health experts, as well as Dr. Cascone, Mr. Mendez, Mr. Calabano, and the board are taking this seriously and looking to not start the hybrid model, um, using the safety-first approach. I encourage, um, all of you as parents who are listening to reach out to your children's teachers, um, because we are here to help you. Um, and we as teachers are continuing to strive to be the best teachers we can be. And if we can partner with the parents in a constructive way, we can continue to provide a more customized and rigorous curriculum to our students and your children. Um, I cannot wait for the day when I can get back to school safely with my students. Um, and I just want to thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ryan Westman, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Hi, thanks so much. Uh, my name is Ryan Westman. Uh, I live at 200 Mount Pleasant Avenue. I've been a community member of West Orange now for nearly a decade. Um, first and foremost, thank you to Dr. Cascone and also to the, um, the teachers and to the board. Um, my wife is a teacher in district. I've had the opportunity over the past 10 years to get to know teachers very well. Um, these are excellent educators that are educating your children, community members who are on the call tonight. I would be proud to call myself a colleague if I worked with them. Um, I am an educator. I'm a professor at a local university. I'm also a professor in a university in Manhattan, as well as an administrator at that university. And I think we cannot be short-sighted. Um, the university that I work at, Manhattan, though I've been working remotely, we have had in-person classes. And to support the, um, the one teacher from the high school, it has been anything but normal. It has been the antithesis of normal. And it has not been a meaningful experience for the students who have attended those classes. Um, and they let us know on a daily basis. I am really quite shocked that we actually even have sports. Um, the university that I work at, including local university I formerly worked at, has canceled sports, even with weekly testing for those athletes, because it is just too dangerous to have that out there. Um, I have been in the schools. I've, I've feel like they are my homes. And I worry about the safety of children, considering that I've been in my wife's classroom in December and January, where students wear jackets and they can see their breath. And I've been in it in June, where it's upwards of 80 degrees, and it is too hot for relief. The systems just do not work the way that they're designed to. They're outdated, and that is a major health concern for all of your children. Um, being a person who works in education, I respect credentials, and I respect the opinions of experts. If we have experts on this call that are suggesting that it is not safe, I suggest that we follow that advice. I think the one thing, um, that I find, um, concerning is that I hear uh, voices saying that teachers are rejoicing, teachers don't want to be in school, teachers are babysitters. I've heard that before. Um, the, the energy and effort that all educators in West Orange put in on a daily basis is phenomenal. The hundreds of hours that went in by Dr. Cascone, um, Assistant Superintendent Demendez to put this system in place that you have now is just remarkable that you have the system that you have in place right now. Um, I had COVID, and so did my wife back in March. I don't wish this on anyone. I lost a coworker. We do not see our families because of fear of spreading and infecting to them. I please ask you to consider the recommendations of our professional health experts, and we will resume school at a time that's health, uh, safe and healthy for everyone.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Sharon Ortiz. If you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Sharon Ortiz, Lowell Avenue, and a teacher at West Orange High School. Um, I'd like to thank our superintendent and Board of Ed for continuing to consider our safety in our schools and our community. The experts were very clear, and their medical knowledge and voice concerns mirror those of my colleagues and I. I would like nothing more than to be in my classroom with my students. My kids are rising to the challenge and trying their best to be positive and make the best of this situation. I'm so impressed and thankful on a daily basis for their maturity and participation in the classroom communities that we have built. I can't wait to see their faces. While I can clearly see both sides of this issue, safety should come first, period. I know that we are wary of comparing ourselves to districts such as Patterson, Elizabeth, Newark. However, one of the major reasons they close is the same reason that we must. Concern for all their children, especially those that are brown and who may live in multi-generational homes. We have to protect them and each other. I'd like to speak also to the time change. As much as this may surprise you, my high schoolers were not fans of this time change. Many are just getting used to getting up at this time, and some are also helping their parents in difficult situations with after-school jobs. That will be a problem with the adjustment to the schedule. These are unprecedented times and require consideration and grace from all sides. The schools are run by adults, and a lot of those adults are especially vulnerable to coronavirus. I think a lot of times people forget that the kids won't be in school by themselves. We are asking that you, our co-partners, allow the district to proceed safely. I know that this decision isn't an easy one for you, Dr. C., and I implore you to continue to follow the science and put our safety first. Thank you and be safe.
Thank you.
Thank you. Melissa Malphatano, if you can please follow the prompt on your screen.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Melissa Malphatano, I'm a teacher at Kelly Elementary, and I've been teaching in West Orange for 18 years. Um, I want to start off by saying thank you, thank you, thank you to Dr. Cascone and Mr. Mendez and the entire board, because you have all got above and beyond. And I do applaud you for what you are doing right now. Even just listening to all of us um, is a big improvement from where we've been in years past. Um, I don't have a formal letter. I just have a couple notes that I wrote. Um, but one of the things that we teach at Kelly is that all students need to be respectful, responsible, and safe. And I want to emphasize the word "safe" because if we're teaching the kids that, then we also have to show them that we need to be safe. Um, I'm also speaking on behalf of a teacher that currently has COVID. Um, I'm telling you this not for the applause or for the oohs and ahs. I'm telling you this because I was able to sit on my computer and teach every single day the last week because I had the ability of teaching from home. My husband has COVID. My three-year-old has COVID, and we were waiting on the test results of my four-year-old. We are all home now quarantining. It's not very easy to sit home with two kids and quarantine and expect them not to be all over you. The one thing I could tell you is that I sat here and I taught all my third graders. They have no idea that I have COVID. Um, that was not important for them. What was important is that they saw my face every morning, that we got through the lessons, and that I taught. Um, if I was at school and we were doing the hybrid method, uh, that wouldn't have been the case. Unfortunately, my entire class most likely would have been home. I would have been home, and they would not have been getting the teaching that they deserved. I'm very happy to say that we are all starting to get better, and hopefully this whole pandemic will be behind us soon. I just want to emphasize the whole safety portion of it. I'm scared to go back and to possibly get one of my students sick, or maybe get one of their family members sick. I laid up at night when I found out that I was COVID-positive and thought every single person I may have come in contact with, I'm worried about if I could have contacted, they could have contacted someone else who is immune compromised and have gotten sicker. Um, we now have 11 family members with it, and it wasn't that we were being unsafe or crazy and going to parties or weddings. It's just the way that this virus works. It does not care, care what color you are, what age you are. It just comes. Thank you so much for listening to me. Thank you for worrying about us being safe. And I really, really thank you from the bottom of my heart and my family's heart. Thank you.
Thank you, and I hope you're all doing better soon.
Thanks.
Thank you. Alexandra Mizrahi, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Cookie. Uh, Alexandra Mizrahi, 66 Mitchell Street. Um, I would also like to, to, to thank the board, Cascone, Ebony, and everyone for ma- giving us the opportunity to address our concerns. And a huge thanks to the staff in general, and especially my kids' teachers, and Anna Delia Gaias Counselor, who has been beyond amazing, and the virtual, uh, platform put in place that allows my kids, who have not other choice but virtual learning. I am, I am not pushing to return to school, no, because I don't think that the kids need to return, but more for medical reasons. As a medical fragile myself, my kids in the high school, they have, they understand that there is no other option for our family. So, eh, the little time in the school, um, the days or hours isn't worth it, the risk for our family. But I know that for everyone is missing to go back to everything prior COVID. I don't, eh, I do think that we should have a plan with safety first to everyone, and we need to stick to it, the safety first. I don't understand about, oh, it's okay, and that's more like a question, what is okay for sports that are well-attended, more like a party? But at the same time, Frisbee Club was canceled, one that does, does require distancing in order to be able to do it and have zero spectators. My request tonight is to see the possibility to, schools sport to close, which will help us and put, in, including towns such as Powell, which included also the public health, because public health is, eh, is and should be paramount. Also, I would like to see if it's possible in future meetings to invite, uh, Christine O'Hertie. Uh, as I see their parents with children with special needs or receiving a special education, they have concerns, and they are not really answering. Um, the last thing that I would like to, to say is pretty much, eh, also as a pass, you know, thank in education, I would like to thank Christine O'Hertie for collaborating from day one with me in the families that I serve with special needs. And lastly, definitely lastly, my prayers and thought for the staff that are currently battling with COVID, and for those that have lost one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Karen Green. If you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Karen Green, high school teacher. As a teacher, I'm doing my best to provide the most effective learning experience for my students. Yes, I would love to be back in the classroom and do the activities I have done in the past years. Though speaking as a parent, as many of you are doing tonight, I am worried about bringing the virus back to my household. I have already had conversations with my husband of staying at hotels if I need to quarantine and being away from my eight-month-old son for a significant amount of time. So yes, being in So yes, being in the classroom is important for social well-being, but a child's physical health, health, physical well-being is more important. I want to thank the superintendent, board, and health safety expert for all your time and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Next we have Jessica Moffettley. If you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Hi, good evening. Thank you so much to Dr., eh, I'm sorry, Jessica Moffettley. I teach at Kelly and been teaching for 15 years, I'm here in District 16 years total. And I would just like to thank Dr. Cascone, Ebony, Dominguez, and the board. The leadership has been astounding and I really, really appreciate how you have time and time again taken into consideration the health and safety of the faculty, staff, and students. It is so important. Thank you so much for listening to the experts' advice and for allowing us to hear it as well firsthand. It is so clear that there is no handle on this virus, right? We don't know those who have COVID and recovered, God bless them. Some people don't. And also those who have recovered, we have no, eh, we don't know the long-term impact that it has on the body. So this is, this is very, a very serious thing. And hearing my colleagues, my coworkers talk and those who have, my, my husband, he's an educator, eh, he's lost a colleague at his school due to COVID. This is, this is, eh, very important that we maintain the health and safety of our staff and of our students, even our staff who's already in our schools. A number of schools, as you know, have had to quarantine, including my homeschool of Kelly. And every time I read the letters or every time I, I see the notices, I just say a prayer because you don't know how that is impacting the kids and the students in our families and the students that they may have come in contact with. So it really, it really concerns me. And there's been an uptick in cases, right? And particularly in Essex County, we need to really take heed to that and to know that if we go back into hybrid, which I'm willing to teach in any environment, but if it's hybrid, there, it's very likely that we're going to have to pivot back to virtual. And not only that, we have lives like literally hanging on limbs who have, you know, who, people who get this, um, this virus. I also want to speak to as a parent. Um, I have three little ones at home and so I understand both sides. I really do. And I do want to say that, that we're coming into the flu and the cold season, right? So many kids have little sniffles and whatever, eh, runny noses. They're not going to really be able to go into hybrid, you know, taking their masks off and, you know, doing that. And I know for my kids, they have to be sent home and then they have to court, you know, not quarantine, but 72 hours before you can get back. And so they're in and out of school. And I was like, oh, my gosh, you know, this is, this is a little crazy. So I'm experiencing that as a parent and as a teacher, I didn't even think about that. Like the number of students who have flu-like symptoms or, or coronavirus symptoms, we don't know, you know, is it coronavirus? We don't know whether to send them home, whether, it's just so much to think about. But, um, I just want to thank you for again, keeping our health and safety first. Let's follow the experts' advice. Let's go back when it's safe. Let's continue to teach the kids. I love, love, love my class. I love my colleagues, my, my parents. So thank you so much for listening, um, but let's keep the health paramount, health and safety of the faculty, staff, and students paramount. Thank you so much.
Thank, thank.
Okay, thank you. Next we have Jennifer S. If you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Hi, how are you? Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, awesome. Jennifer Stoudniki, West Orange High School teacher. First of all, I would like to take, thank Dr. Cascone and the board for doing all they can to keep teachers and students safe thus far. As so many of you have echoed, we do not envy your position or the decision you have to make. There is nothing more that I would love, that I would love to do than be with my students, but I am very weary about returning to school. I know that I am not okay putting my students harm, in harms way, knowing that there is a chance they can get sick. And I realize it's not a certainty that students will not get sick, but it's also not a certainty that they won't, regardless of the precautions taken. To address all those who have said schools are not spreaders, that is also because no one has been in school. I heard a lot of people say people are contracting the virus from parties or playdates. But when schools open, where will the students end up in the schools? No school-aged children aren't, are not this ones who are symptomatic, but it's not a guarantee. Based on the schedule at the middle and high school, teachers will be seeing their students for two hours a month. Students will be in school for 20.5 hours a month. In some of my classes, I will only have two to three students in person per class with the other 22 to 24 students virtual. And the reason why the, the class numbers are so low is because many of the students have chosen to remain home to stay safe. Many parents have chosen to keep their children home because it's not safe. In terms of the season, it's going to be very cold soon and we all know how the New Jersey winters get. Based on the science, it's pretty common knowledge that the cold weather suppresses our immune system, thus making us more susceptible to contracting any sort of illness, especially those which impact the lungs like COVID. And apparently that also thrives in the cold weather. And if that's the case, I don't see how a decent ventilation system will prevent this virus. If we need to keep windows open during the colder months, that will just increase our susceptibility regardless of the ventilation. I know we all want a return to normalcy, but I ask if this return is worth putting lives at risk. Is this the, is the community okay with the idea that people are going to get sick and people may suffer from the illness? Because at the end of the day, this conversation should not be of, this conversation should be about life and health and keeping the entire population safe. There are no guarantees that anyone can provide to ensure our health and safety. While the chance of contracting the illness may be lower by taking precautions, the fact is we can still get it. And a teach, and a teacher or a child can die from the illness. We know this is true because it has happened in a number of states and in a number of countries. Just the other day, there was a story about a family in Missouri whose son Peyton Bumgarth died from COVID. He was 13. So if by chance something like this does happen in our district, what sort of trauma would this pose on your child? To explain to him or her that an innocent life had to be taken because we wanted to err on the side of haste versus the side of caution. I personally would rather explain to my child, we have to stay home because it's not safe, than explain to him or her that their teacher or their classmate is not with them because they are sick or even worse. This is a very difficult decision, no doubt. But I think right now we need to think as a community, not as an individual. We need to think about what is best for the health and safety of everyone as a whole. And in the end, it will be impossible to know if we overreacted or did too much, but it will be very apparent if we reacted too hastily. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Next we have Bonnie Pomeroy. If you can follow the prompt on your screen.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, thanks, Bonnie.
Hi, good evening. Um, I am a teacher.
Bonnie, I'm sorry, we just need your name and address or where you teach for the record.
My name is Bonnie Pomeroy and I am a teacher at Edison Middle School. I've been teaching in West Orange for 16 years, 10 of them at Edison Middle School. Now, I respect the leadership of the board for starters, Dr. Cascone and Ms. Dominguez, and fully support their decision to stay remote. Our town's public health officials have made it clear that it would not be wise to go hybrid at this time. So I support the board and Dr. Cascone in listening to those health officials. The cases are rising in our school community as well as nationwide. Today, our country had over 100,000 COVID cases, the highest day of cases since the pandemic began. We all want to go back to school, but we must consider safety and the lives of our children and school community first. As a teacher, I want nothing more than to be back in the classroom with my students, but that just isn't possible at this time. We are in the middle of a pandemic that has killed more than 200,000 people so far in our country and now the cases are going higher than ever before. Teachers have been working very hard to make remote learning work for our students. I spent the whole summer preparing for remote learning this year. Since I teach chorus, I needed to come up with some pretty creative ways to keep my students singing and learning music. I discovered some wonderful online tools that I use now, such as Practice First and the Vocal Musician Level One Course Online. I have learned a multitude of technology to keep my students happy and engaged remotely. I teach using Google Slides, Screencastify, Paradek, EdPuzzle, Kahoot, Flipgrid, Practice First, Vocal Musician, and Note Flight Learn. Although remote learning is not anyone's first choice, I have made it work. My students are engaged, singing, and learning. In addition to the lessons I teach using Zoom, I spend hours emailing students and parents and maintaining constant communication. I work many extra hours now due to remote learning, but I am glad to do that to keep my students safe. In every one of my Zoom lessons, I include one Paradek question that addresses how they are feeling that day. I care deeply about my students, which is why I wholly support their protection. I would like to thank the board, Dr. Cascone, and Ms. Dominguez for all their hard work and dedication throughout this pandemic. And I wish to express my gratitude for a wise decision to listen to the public health officials and stay remote until the COVID cases go down. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next we have Russell Dodson. If you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Hi, this is Russell Dodson, 13 Helen Avenue. Wow, it's a, it's a year. We've been basically dealing with this thing for eight months now. Um, and I was thinking a year ago when we were on Board of Ed meetings, we weren't talking about anything like this. It's a certainly a very different world that we live in. I want to thank Dr. Cascone. I want to thank the board. I want to thank the teachers, especially the teachers. I think that what they've been doing over the last few months has been absolutely phenomenal. They've been put in a very difficult situation. I've watched my two kids, um, over the last few months have to deal with all this, eh, new technology and stress. And, and to be honest with you, um, I'm, I'm just impressed. I'm very impressed with what the staff has, has been, or sorry, the teachers have been able to do. Obviously, um, where we are today is, is nowhere, nobody wants to be where we are today. I want my kids to go back to school. I want everything to be back to normal. If we could go back a year, i- it would be amazing. But what I would like to say is I, I was never a fan of the, the hybrid model. I, I always felt like the hybrid model was going to create a situation where the schools are going to be open, the schools are going to be closed. The teachers were going to be quarantined, the teachers weren't going to be consistent. The kids weren't going to be getting, eh, consistent education. Presently in the situation that we have, um, the kids are getting a consistent education. They're getting a great education as far as I can tell. Obviously, it's not the one we all want, um, but it is consistent. Um, and they're able to have the same teachers every day because we've been able to do it this way. And, you know, we really have to give everybody a lot of credit for making this happen. I just want to say thank you again to the staff. It's, eh, it's amazing what you guys have done and, um, you know, keep up the good work and let's all go back to school when the professionals tell us that it's safe for everybody to go back to school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Denise, if you can please follow the prompt on your screen. Denise, I just saw that you took away your hand. I'm assuming that if you do want to speak, can you please raise your hand once again? Okay, so Nancy Feldman. If you can please follow the prompt on your screen.
Good evening. I am a school nurse at Kelly Elementary School. I've been in the district almost 30 years. Um, I'm speaking on behalf of all the school nurses when I say that I deeply appreciate the West Orange Health Department, Dr. Kelly, and Dr. Cascone supporting the science. The nurses have a completely different perspective than the teachers. Our challenges are different. But we have all noticed this uptick and we're all extremely concerned about it. I go to work worrying about the students that are in the school right now and the staff that are in the school. I take it personally as we all, all the nurses do to try and keep our school safe, our teachers healthy, and our students healthy. And going back to school with the numbers that we're seeing, not just across the wor, eh, the planet, but particularly in our town. And that's where the decision should be made is, um, in a mu, from municipality to municipality. And West Orange has, eh, very concerning numbers that are increasing and, um, that's all I really have to say, that I support the science, the nurses support the science, and we greatly appreciate everything that you've done and all of, all that you have listened to. And we hope that we continue do, doing virtual. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's who we have left on public comment.
All right, great. I think what we'll do now is we'll take a very short five-minute or so break. Let everybody, eh, you know, we've been here since five, so that's, it's a long one. And then we'll come back and we'll, eh, have some responses and then we'll continue with the rest of the meeting.
Okay, if I can have the, everyone on the dais, eh, close out their screens and mutes and then you can turn them back on when you return, so I know that you're here. Thank you. As Mr. Upper said, we will be taking a very short break. Eh, if you need to use the facilities, get a drink of water, do a little stretching, and we'll be back with you shortly. Thank you. As Mr. Alper said, we will be taking a very short break. Uh, if you need to use the facilities, get a drink of water, uh, do a little stretching and we'll be back with you shortly. Thank you. Okay, we'll be getting the meeting very shortly. We're just waiting for everyone to come back.
All right, um, I'll turn it over to Dr. C and a minute or two. I, just a couple of, I think uh, themes that I heard a couple of times and I just wanted to touch on a couple of things. Um. Yeah, on the topic of rigor and you know, I don't, I'm not a big fan of the word. I think it's sort of uh, got adopted by the school reform crowd at some point or something. But you know, I think it's just a common word for it. I don't know if it's really the right word in this case, though. It might not be what we're really, what we're really trying to get at. You know, what I'm hearing is, you know, and maybe it's different between the grade levels. I think it sounds to me like it's more of a concern at the upper levels and in the elementary. But I think what might be a more accurate way to put it is simply um, it, it's, it's more about time, I think, in a lot of cases than, than the actual level of the work. You know, I don't think anyone's questioning, you know, the hard work that our teachers do or the great job that the district has done in, you know, building this uh, remote program and how much better we're doing than I think a lot of our surrounding districts at it. You know, and acknowledging that they're doing fantastic work while at the same time recognizing that it's, you know, it's just not going to be as good as in-person could be in a world where we'd be able to do in-person. I don't think anybody can deny that. Uh, but I, I think the issue is, you know, especially when you compare it to the schools that are able to be in-person. You know, they've got a full day of school going on and we built a program that isn't a full day. Uh, you know, at least in some part because we were, you know, thinking that we'd be, you know, at the point this, we were designing this, we were thinking of a September startup with hybrid. And we were trying to keep the day parts in sync and we were trying to make sure that, you know, kids who were in buildings weren't going to be, you know, in there for the longer period of time for more exposure to the virus and more transmission and so on and so forth. Um, but I think when we're, you know, in a virtual mode and if we're in a virtual mode for a longer time, you know, that it's not, in some cases, I think it is rigor. I think there are some folks maybe who aren't in honors and AP in the higher levels who are looking for harder or more challenging work or additional projects. But I think it's for a lot of people, it's just a matter of time that it's, you know, the day is not taking up. And the school day isn't taking up enough of their students' time, I think, is what we're hearing. Um, or at least that's what I'm hearing. Um, you know, there were a couple of comments about, you know, discounting science or doubting the experts or something like that. And you know, I, I think unanimously, that's not the case here. I don't think anybody is doubting or discounting the science or the experts or the health professionals. Um, I think it's a matter of, you know, wanting to be sure that we're able to ask questions, you know, sometimes sharp questions and make sure that we understand exactly what the limitations are and what the recommendations are. And you know, to make sure that we have adequately explored, you know, some of the more out of the box ideas that, you know, have come up. I think there was a couple other things. Um, yeah, I want to point out there have been zero uh, cases um, of COVID on football or cheer teams, whether that's the high school level, the rec level or the PAL level. Uh, it's, it's all been completely clear, uh, just to get that out there. And you know, there's, the last thing I think is there's this uh, this idea that sports are being prioritized uh, that comes up occasionally. And I just want to make it clear that, you know, in-person education in sports aren't competing interests, right? They exist independently of one another. So, y- you know, it's, it's not the case that if we'd canceled the football season and the cheer season and banned that, that in-person school would have found some way to exist uh, during the fall semester. Uh, it wasn't going to be magically able to happen if we, if we skipped sports, right? It's about being able to do what we can for our kids to provide these SEL opportunities where it's safe to do so. And under the NJSIAA guidelines, it looked pretty clear and I think our lack of cases has, you know, proven this correct. It looked pretty clear that it was going to be safe to do these outdoor fall sports at the same time that it maybe wasn't as safe to go into the classroom until we got the ventilation equipment that we needed. You know, now we're starting to look into, you know, winter sports and, you know, it may be a different situation because some of them are indoors, some of them are close contact. You know, I think it's going to have to be for the district, a uh, you know, a case-by-case decision when they look at these things because, you know, sports like, you know, hockey, for instance, you know, you're out in an arena and you've got a lot of airspace in there and kids who aren't really in, you know, close skin-on-skin physical contact, you know, you got that on one hand and, you know, wrestling at the same time of year is, is a completely different situation where you're, you know, inside in a smaller environment, usually in a lot more close contact. So, you know, everything's different, but it's, it's, it's certainly not the case that just because we're able to do one thing safely during a particular timeframe, that it's being prioritized over something else. So, just want to make sure that's clear. Um, I think that's all I've got on responding. Dr. C, if you'd like to take some things on.
Oh, Dr. Cascone, you're muted.
I know. This is our thing. This is what we, what we do. Um, thank you, Mr. Alper and thank you, Ms. Craftisa. Um, I, you know, I think it's important that, you know, obviously we've been out of here for a while. Um, and we, we've had a lot of folks come and um, and, and, and comment and ask questions. And so I think notwithstanding the length of the meeting thus far, I think it's important for us to go through the questions and, you know, I'll take most. Um, but we'll defer to um, either Mrs. Demendez or uh, Dr. Kelly if I feel that I'm not equipped uh, to answer them. But before I get into the questions, I, I do want to take a moment to um, just um, just give my best regards, um, you know, to all folks who came and spoke tonight. Um, whether, whether they're currently battling the illness or have family members and children battling the illness. Um, or worse off, um, have had family members um, who, who have passed as a result of it somewhat recently. Um, you know, and Mr. Weck's case, so can certainly, you know, sincere condolences um, uh, in, in that regard. I wanted to make sure that I was um, that I, I mentioned that before I get into the, you know, kind of the brass tacks here. So, um, relative to um, you know, considering COVID testing for students, you know, this is a, this is a question that, you know, um, w- we've been back and forth on a bit. And, you know, I think y- you know, my take on it and, 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 you know, I'd asked Dr. Kelly to weigh in as well if he felt necessary. Um, is that when we consider, you know, the number of students that we, that we would have to test on a regular basis and the fact that that testing would need to be regular. Um, and when considering that, um, do all of our students have uh, equal and ready access to that testing? You know, how logistically feasible and sustainable um, is, is doing that? And, and considering that it's not um, a, you know, something that is absolutely required under CC guidelines. Now, a- again, I, I use the example of TB testing. You know, if we knew that once we test a student and they were negative and we knew that they're good and that they're good for, you know, a, a certain amount of time, I think it would make good sense. But considering that, that's not the case, um, I think when you consider the input versus the output, um, I, I'm not sure of the uh, the value of that. But Dr. Kelly, would you like to add anything on that?
Yeah, I would like to add in too, somebody could have a negative test and be exposed after that test. And if you test within the first two, three days, it's still going to be negative. Because they haven't started to shed the viral particles. So ideally we test it like three to five days after exposure. And with that being said, I think it may give us a false sense of security unless we're testing every other day. And even then we're going to miss some because, because of the, the lag time. And then you have the, the, the problems with what type of test, PCR versus antigen. Uh, the antigen tester spot, you get them fifteen minutes, but they're not as accurate. So they have to be confirmed with the other tests. I, I don't think it's a realistic approach that will actually make a difference as far as uh, protecting the students and staff.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Kelly. You know, we, we, one of the themes, uh, you know, that we've heard and, 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 you know, is this, this idea of consistency of experience uh, on the platform and, and um, enhancing what we're doing. I think, you know, that's all a- and, and feedback and I think that's all kind of bundled together. And, and we have had um, a survey um, that's, that's ready to go. You know, we've been holding off on sending it because, uh, really because it, you know, we didn't necessarily feel that it made sense to send out a survey relative to the virtual experience i- i- in close proximity to the hybrid, the beginning of the hybrid, because of course we'd want to be collecting feedback on the hybrid. Um, so you, we can expect that a survey will go out shortly so that we can understand, you know, how we can improve upon that. But I, I definitely hear that, uh, we want to continue to look at ways in which we can engage students and which we can provide opportunities for students to be interacting with one another more meaningfully uh, on the virtual uh, platform. Um, I, I would like also to talk, I think, I think Mr. Alper touched upon it, but as it relates to the sports is, you know, I think it's important to realize that, you know, when we, when we started the athletic season in the fall, I mean, first of all, obviously it's authorized to be conducted under the uh, executive order. And when we started at this fall, obviously our cases weren't where they were. And as Mr. Alper said, w- we saw it as an opportunity for something we could do. And that was something really meaningful. And we even heard one parent speak to the fact that, you know, the athletics are really, you know, the only or, you know, one of the only sources of, of kind of, you know, interaction and socialization. You know, and so, and so at this juncture, um, you know, to, you know, to, to shut those things down when, um, you know, when they have uh, demonstrated a very successful track record in terms of um, in, in, in terms of, of cases. Um, but at such time, um, that we're advised that, that that's prudent and that's necessary. Um, that, that is what we do, but we're sincerely hoping that we're able to at least see these fall seasons through to fruition. Because I think that if we were not able to do that, um, it would certainly represent a um, a, a, a serious disappointment and, and um, you know, for the students that are participating in those sports. Now, um, you know, the Ultimate Frisbee Club was a bit of a snafu, but I'm happy to say that that's approved and that's, and that's back on and that's, and that's running. Um, and I agree, I think that um, we, we've been approving clubs. We've approved clubs more recently on the elementary level and I would love to see uh, those up and running as quickly as possible and providing extracurricular opportunities for students uh, across uh, different levels. And we kind of come back to this metric again and, and, you know, I think um, you know, the way you sort of addressed that was, is that, you know, when, when we see that our township um, from a, um, you know, from an infection rate is, you know, has, has been, been dropped down to at least a moderate level of risk, not a low level of risk. And I think it's something that we can, we can consider. Um, again, it would be easy for me to set a day and a time and say it's going to be this day or it's going to be that day. And I know that would be helpful and reassuring to parents to, to have a new timeline. But I would also caution against that because uh, we don't really know the direction the virus is going at this time. And I think that's what Dr. Kelly was alluding to, um, was the fact that we, you know, we need a couple of weeks to see whether this spike is an aberration, whether it's a short-term spike or whether it's the beginning of a more long-term uh, increase in cases, which obviously we, we certainly hope it, it's not. Dr. Kelly, anything you'd like to add to that?
No, I agree exactly with what you said. Yeah, the only thing that I possibly had is um, when people are asking about what are the metrics? And uh, I had, somebody had said, uh, mentioned zero cases. That would, that wasn't quite what I was saying. I never said we had to have zero cases in the, in the town, go back safely. The whole idea was the trending down and the metrics that we're following.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. Um, i- with regard to um, you know, our cases showing that spreading actually took place in schools. Um, Dr. Kelly, did you want to talk, touch on that?
Yeah, I, I can off the top of my head, think of three different districts where we've had spreading in the school. Um, one in particular was a very sad because elderly staff member actually passed away from it. Um, but we're seeing it also staff members giving it to the students. So there is transmission within the school that we've identified.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. Um, you know, just like to speak a little bit about, um, you know, there, I know a number of folks have spoken to special needs population and And, you know, on a, on a, just kind of an overall level. And, you know, I would say that you know, I'm quite confident that that our, you know, whether it's the individual teacher, you know, the case manager, the building principal are there and are veiling themselves and 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 prepared to receive and work with parents. You know, now, you know, can can there be a greater degree of proactive outreach? Possibly, right? It's hard for me to say that for where I'm sitting. And if as a parent, you feel that that's the case, that you haven't had the degree of proactive outreach from a case manager or a teacher, well, I think that that's, you know, that's fair feedback. I mean, that's fair constructive feedback to provide to the case manager, provide to the teacher. And, you know, I'm happy to reach out, but it'd be great if like from time to time, you know, you could throw us a line, right? And and I think that's fair. I think it's important for us to be able to engage in that critical feedback. You know, I would say, and I think you heard some different perspectives relative to assessments happening or not happening. One of the things I said to Mrs. DeMendez this week was I really want it at, you know, our future board meetings for our curricular team, our curriculum team, our supervisors to start coming to our board meetings and presenting, you know, content area updates on the work that's happening. Because there is a tremendous amount of planning work that's happening on a daily basis to refine and 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 upgrade what we're doing. And most recently, team finished, the finishing touches on a revised elementary report card that's actually going to be built right into Power School. So there's a lot of work going on and I really want to get our curriculum team out in front in the next couple of months to to highlight the the things that are going on. You know, in in these regards, as far as assessment and things of that nature. And, you know, I would agree relative this idea of, you know, that the the level of precaution and and care that's being exercised in the society at large is disparate from that which we're experiencing in schools. And I think that's part and parcel of the issue. Is that there has to be a greater degree of congruence and parity between, in other words, it it needs to be a community, almost societal based effort to say, look, we need to control the spread outside of schools in order that schools can be more safe to open. But but we're not seeing that presently, but hopeful. And as the Department of Health indicated, that we'll start to see people exercise a greater degree of caution and getting back to some of those basics of precautionary measures. You know, I, you know, I guess, you know, this idea of, you know, education is, we're not placing a priority on education. And, you know, it's, it's unfortunate and I and I understand, I mean, I understand the frustration. I understand the criticism. But by the same token, I think it's unfortunate that this is, it's being framed as a zero sum game. In other words, if our kids aren't in school, if we're not able to get them in two half days a week, we're not placing a priority on education. You know, when, you know, and when looking at the amount of of resources that the school district, that the board has invested in, whether it's the the technology or whether it's the bandwidth or whether it's the 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 Wi Fi or whether it's the software or the digital textbooks or the PD or the staff, whatever the case may be, invest invested a lot in that. And so while I understand that the onsite piece is a part of that, I would just ask folks to to look to other things that district has done to prioritize education. As far as the the ESL program, we, in fact, we had, we hosted our our first multilingual town hall meeting. And I believe it was November 2nd. Was that, was that Monday? Yeah, on on November 2nd, Monday, we had about 70 or so, you know, linguistically diverse families participate in that call. It was a Q and A, not unlike the one we had done a couple of weeks earlier on Facebook. And we had translators in both Spanish and Creole. And that was really a kind of a kickoff initiative for that program and for our liaison. Our liaison is now in district and has now been conducting outreach on a daily basis to our families. I should also say that we are working on a grant right now with our grant writing partner with the American Honda Foundation on the, to develop a intergenerational STEM enrichment program based at Washington School, which would be slated to kickoff in the fall of 2021. So we're excited about that. Mrs. DeMendez, my understanding is that, could you weigh in on the the extent to which the high school schedule? Would that revert back?
So right now, we are resetting from fall to winter virtual. For the winter virtual, we would stay at the 7:30 AM start time. The times would remain very similar to what they are now. If there are adjustments made, it would be adjustments made based off of these conversations and what we could do to really consider the high school schedule and add some study time for the students, i.e. add some time on Fridays. If we then turn to go to hybrid, we would at that time need to go to the 9:30 schedule for the transportation stagger. But for a winter virtual, if we're, if the decision is that we are going to hold on opening on Monday for hybrid for in person and we're going to stay with a virtual schedule, then on or about November 19th, the mark of the new marking period, we would start a new schedule to include whatever additional time, but at 7:30.
Thank you, Ms. DeMendez. So there was you know, Doc, you know, Dr. Kelly, and it was the speaker who Governor Mur, Governor Murphy has stated that schools are not spreading. But I think, you know, based upon your feedback and what you've observed in the school districts for which you serve as a disposition, would you say that that's not altogether accurate?
I, I, yeah, I would say it's it's probably a delayed. By the time the statistics get up to the governor's office, it's been some time that's passed. Whereas what I'm feeling clinically, it's a different story.
Understood. Yeah, and I mean, in terms of, you know, a fair question is, you know, did did the, you know, did local authorities reach out to, you know, to to private schools? You know, I can't, I can't speak to, you know, whether that occurred. You know, I only know that, you know, outreach was conducted, you know, with us. Let's see here. Just going to work through here, trying to catch as many as I can. I really, I really liked the the suggestion of a mental health day, actually, I had, that had kind of, you know, and not necessarily with great frequency. But I do think, and I'll be honest with you, I really do think that the, the, you know, and I thought, you know, Ms. Bennett's comments about, you know, trauma based approach, you know, because I, we are seeing that. We are seeing that. There, there's no question that, you know, that, you know, that it's it's a tough situation for many of our students, you know. And and I would, and I would argue that it's, it is, you know, again, it's being associated with, well, they're not in school and and that's why they're in that mindset. But I think we can collectively agree that there are a lot of reasons why why people may feel the way they feel nowadays. And, you know, and to some extent, not being in school may exacerbate that. There are many reasons why our young people and ourselves might be troubled about the present and about the future. And, you know, and so I think that, you know, placing a greater emphasis holistically on mental health moving forward, I really think is is something that that needs to be looked at in the short term. And I would just like to say, that is not to say that, you know, I have to, I have to give a shout out to our, our, our student counseling department, because I think that they've done, they've done an amazing job and and they are there for our kids. They have a lot of great services. If you haven't checked out what they have to offer and 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 know that they're there for you. You know, you need to set up an appointment for your child. You need to set an appointment for yourself to talk about your child. Our student counseling department is there and they're ready to assist and they've done an amazing job. And I wanted to make sure that I gave them, you know, a shout out. Right, like the Zoom fatigue, exactly. And I mean, I think that's the, that's the balancing act, right? Because even as much as we're talking about, you know, kind of ramping up on the time that our kids are on screen and, you know, we have to be mindful of that, that, you know, that it's, it's, it's simply not healthy for them to be on for too long without some breaks. And so we have to maintain that 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 balancing act. So that was the start time. There, Ms. DeMendez, there was a, there was a a comment about students only meeting with two teachers. I'm sorry, with teachers two times per week. Can you address that? I wasn't sure that that was necessarily accurate, but I could be wrong.
Yeah, I think, I think when we consider the high school and we consider the current schedule, we often think that the students are getting much less time. But I think we are sometimes not aware of the drop, the rotating drop schedule and that students really only have their classes three times a week. And so then now, if they're getting them three times a week in a virtual model, we're still giving them their time and now we've expanded to an hour, right? So there is that flop of periods one through four and five through eight. And so then the students get it twice. But then they also get the Friday, right, where it is asynchronous, but it is. We are providing some very concrete instruction there, right? So while we'll never be able to compare virtual to in person, we have added those three days in that week. We have extended the periods there, an hour long, right? And so then we we do believe it's a really strong model that we're leaning into. Of course, we will continue to explore adding to it. But I do want to bring up the idea that, or clarify the fact that we do have a rotating drop and students aren't, because they're in school five days a week, doesn't mean they have each content area five days a week.
Thank you, Ms. DeMendez. You know, I just want to, you know, I had had a conversation with a parent. I think it was last week, you know, some concerns about the, you know, advanced placement. And and so, you know, I asked Mrs. DeMendez to, you know, really just kind of tabletop that with the supervisors and, you know, really, you know, touch base with teachers and, you know, understand our teachers or the AP teachers similarly concerned about content coverage and and getting through. You know, I will tell you that, and granted, they were in most of the year last year, but, you know, they were not in for, you know, the two months leading up to the exam. And our AP scores were as good, if not better, than they were in previous years. So I think that that's promising. You know, I also, you know, have thought, you know, you know, if you would subscribe to this idea that, as we know, college courses typically meet, you know, two, maybe three times a week. And the remainder of the time, you know, students are doing assigned readings, you know, study groups, things of that nature. And so in some ways, it's actually more reflective of what an actual college experience would look like. But I duly noted and I and I think, you know, it's a conversation that's worth having amongst the supervisors and amongst the teachers to get their perspective on whether or not they feel like they have the time and they're they're covering and whether they're getting that feedback from their students. I'm sure that the AP teachers are, are, just by virtue of what I know about AP kids, AP kids are are not afraid to tell the teacher and give them their honest opinion about whether or not they feel like they're not getting what they need. And so I'm sure that there's a quite an interactive dialogue that's happening within those AP classes. And and then those adjustments, you know, are being made. I loved Ms. Roro's suggestion about that snack and chat. And I, you know, and I know Ms. DeMendez is hearing these things and as she is really working with the teams on kind of the instructional side and the program side. I think this idea of how we can build in more opportunities for interaction and socialization, albeit virtually, you know, are going to be taken into consideration. Relative to Mr. Kesselman's question, is any part of the decision about teaching staff not wanting going back because of safety? And and I would say, listen, we are, you know, we have an ongoing spreadsheet of of leaves. If you look at the board, you know, the board motions on a, on a monthly basis, leading up to November 9th, we've been approving people for leaves. It's only a concern insofar as the difficulty in finding qualified suitable replacements, you know, to take over for these teachers, right? And 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 the inevitability of needing substitutes who who are going to be in the classrooms when we have teachers that are home. And in in talking with, and someone mentioned, you know, have we been talking with other districts? I mean, I participate in a, in a county roundtable of all the superintendents, you know, on Friday mornings. And I have a smaller group of superintendents that I kind of interact with on a more regular basis. And and all the superintendents who presently are managing hybrid all, you know, report that daily coverage is is it's a struggle every day, finding coverage for classes for teachers who are either out ill or quarantined. And so that is personnel is a challenge. And I think a gentleman who spoke towards the end of the public comment, you know, kind of, kind of spoke to that, the idea that, you know, what his concerns were about hybrid. But, you know, we had, you know, relatively few leaves that were requested. I think, let me just kind of look through here. You know, I, I think it's worth addressing, you know, this, because, you know, we do have, we do have some teachers in and they're teachers of our of our, 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 our neediest students. And, you know, I, I want to be very clear on this, you know, because I think, you know, my, my opinion is, you know, it's nuanced, a little bit different than some of what was expressed towards the end of the meeting, which is that the, I, and I believe when in talking to Dr. Kelly and he can, he can follow up on me if he feels like I'm not, you know, I'm not communicating it accurately, is that it is the, the infusion of large numbers of students and large numbers of staff into our buildings. In other words, at no point in time, even amidst this spike in cases, has, in other words, Dr. Kelly didn't come to me and say, I don't think it's safe for anybody to be in the buildings. I don't think it's safe for any students to be in the buildings. That's, that wasn't, that wasn't the, the, the position. The position is that he did not think it was advisable to be bringing in hundreds of students and teachers into buildings amidst an uptick. And so, you know, it's, it's sort of similar to me, kind of, you know, I have to be here. I can't do my job from home exclusively. I mean, there are days I can do my job from home. And in that respect, I'm essential. And so I think that, you know, there are certain students who can't be serviced adequately every day virtually. And and so, and so to those staff members, you know, who 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 fall into this category, what I will tell you is that we are all ears relative to answering every question you have, addressing every concern you have and giving you everything you need to feel as absolutely comfortable as possible, you know, when you're in. And and, you know, we're working through through some things with mask wearing. And and as I've said, you know, when it comes to, you know, mask wearing is like, and I mentioned in an email, Mr. Maniscal can attest to this because he was CC'd on the email. And I said, when it comes to mask wearing, we will err on the side, strongly on the side of teacher discretion on that. Because ultimately, you're in the classroom with the student, wouldn't be top down about a decision like that. And so we're, we're all ears and ready to do whatever it is and provide whatever it is in order for you to feel comfortable and as safe as possible. And I think that's, you know, I, a lot of questions here, a lot of comments, you know, I may have missed some things here. Oh, I, I'd also mention, you know, because, and and I think it's worth mentioning that, you know, Mrs. Googerty Fitzgerald, Ms. Ribero hosted two parent universities for special education, for parents of special education students. They were widely distributed. They were distributed in multiple languages. And regrettably, the first parent university, they actually had zero attendees at that meeting. And at the second meeting, I think they had 12 or 13 parents. So I only mentioned that, and I don't understand, I'm not saying that to be critical. Because, look, we all have a lot going on. I only say it because when outside the box, thinking proactively, we are, we are thinking proactively about how we can design support mechanisms for, for our parents. But they're only as good if people actually show up and take advantage of them. So we, you know, we encourage you to do that. And I think that might And I think that might, might bring me to the end in terms of what I had. So with that, Mr. Alper, I would, I would turn it back to you, sir.
Right. Thank you very much. All right. Closing out that section, we're going to move on. Personnel items one through three. May I have a motion?
I'm just moved.
There's like three of them. Great. How about a second?
I'll second if I was for real.
Any discussion? All right. Mr. Calavano, let's vote.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Wolfstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Tony Cliff?
Yes.
Vice President Trick Scales?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes. All right. Next, finance, business office items one through three. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I'll highlight that we've got some donations. Let's thank Dr. Joe for a number of them for Kelly's school, St. Barnabas, the Blackbaud Giving Fund and for some hand sanitizer that we've been careful to make sure is branded in an acceptable way and will only be used in central office. Tito's Handmade Vodka Hand Sanitizer, which is fantastic. And seriously, it's, you know, there's no, it doesn't look anything like, you've got it right there, right boss? Perfect. I thought people might wonder about that. Any discussion on anything there? All right. Mr. Calavano?
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Wolfstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Tony Cliff?
Yes.
Vice President Trick Scales?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes. All right. At this point, we have a board policy workshop on the agenda. There's been some discussion that we may want to table that and do this at a later date because we've been here since 5:00 PM and it's 11:00 PM. Would anybody like to make a, do you want to just?
Please just pull it.
Do we want to do that? Is there anything that we need to do that's, that's emergent in there that?
Yes, sir. There, there is, Mr. Alper, there is one, one item which I, I is time sensitive, which is the bylaw 0164.6, remote public board meeting during a declared emergency. This was recently forwarded to us by Strauss Esme.
Right. Get to that.
It's, if, did Ms. Hughes provide hard copy packets for all of you or just for those who were?
No, no.
Got it in an email though. From November 2nd.
Dr. Kessinger, can you just repeat the number, please?
Sure. It's 0164.6.
It's the new bylaw.
That's right. That one that came as a Word document.
So, so this, you know, just, just to kind of, as a starting point to the conversation, you know, it actually is sort of tangent to the discussion that, you know, we were having relative to, you know, going, going in person and kind of that debate, you know, over going in person and the idea. And I think if you look at page three, letter C, number two, and I'll just read it in case you haven't located the text, but if during a declared emergency, the board holds a physical meeting in a location where pursuant to state and or federal guidelines, meant to mitigate the risk of a contagious infection, the declared emergency necessitates capacity restrictions, reducing the number of individuals that can be present in the meeting room to an amount below that reasonably expected for the public meeting by the board. Cutting through the chase here, the board must either hold a public meeting at another location with adequate capacity for the reasonably expected attendance by the public or hold the public meeting as both an in-person meeting and a remote public meeting. Right? So that, that, that to me is, is, is really the most salient piece here. Because that's, that's kind of the, the central idea what we were talking about, which is, let's say we, we decided to do an in-person for November 16th in the auditorium. And let's say we could expect, and for example, that we had, you know, 400 people on this. And recognizing that with social distance, we, we could not accommodate 400 people within the auditorium. We would either have to find an alternate location where we could accommodate that many people or we would have to do it both remote and in-person. And I think we talked about some of the technological challenges and costs associated with doing that. And then it really just memorializes, in other words, so then if you, if you decide to do it remote, it really talks about the, the various requirements associated with that.
So Scott, I do have one question about it. Um, so the very beginning, under section A.
Oh, sorry. That was me. Yep.
It references, so I'm assuming that the first part of the, the paragraph, um, in reference to Board of Education would apply to us, but then it says a Board of Trustees and I'm thinking that's specific to the charter schools. We don't allow charter schools in West Orange, so should that be in here?
Yeah. I mean, I, I think, you know, yeah, I think for, for the, yes, for the purpose of our policy, we could probably have, we could have charter school and Board of Trustees omitted from the bylaw. So I can make note of that, that edit.
Yeah. I just, that, that was really my only question was, was this specific to a charter school or to public schools? And I just wanted to make sure it was for us. Does that make sense?
Absolutely. That's a good, it's a good catch. And, and, you know, I, I think, you know, recognizing that, you know, the, you know, the first reading, you know, recognizing that you haven't had a lot of, neither I nor y'all have had a lot of time to really review it, that this could be a pro forma first reading and we could, you know, go through it, you know, with, with more of a fine tooth comb and, you know, provide those edits. I mean, ideally, I mean, ideally if, if, get those edits by, I don't know, like you think you could turn them around by Monday of next week? Because if you could, then we could do a second reading at the 16th and have it approved on, basically have a second reading on the 16th. You think you could turn it around over the weekend? Then I'll, I'll do the same.
I think a lot of this is, it's one of those cases where they take the, the new statute language that says, oh, this is how you have to conduct your meetings during an emergency and they turn it into a policy and they leave every word from the statute. So you end up with stuff that just doesn't apply.
Correct. And it really just kind of memorializes that which we've been doing, you know? So I mean, I think when you read it, you, you'll know what we've been doing is aligned with what the bylaw requires. I mean, some things on sworn testimony, right? I mean, we, you know, we don't have to worry about that, at least at this juncture, anyway.
Been a while since we've done that. All right. Do we have a further discussion on it or do we want to make a motion for first reading there?
I'll move as a first reading with the caveat that we will have a chance to make edits and recommendations by Monday.
Sounds good. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Calavano?
Yes.
Mr. Wolfstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Tony Cliff?
Yes.
Vice President Trick Scales?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes. All right. That is it. If anybody has anything emergent that they want to jump in on, we don't have a board report on the agenda, but I'll just mention it just because we've been here a while. If anybody had anything they needed to say. Alrighty.
Two things. I just want to congratulate our football team on being ranked or winning the Orange Conference and our soccer team, our boys soccer team just won the SEC. So congratulations to both of those teams.
Absolutely. Great. All right. Our next meeting will be, yes ma'am.
I just want to thank everybody who came on tonight and I'm sure that's on behalf of all of us who are here. I mean, we had over 400 people and we still have 143 hanging in. So we're really appreciative and we're happy that we did make the decision to give up our policy meeting tonight, essentially to share the information with you and to hear your voices. So thank you.
Thank you. All right. Our next meeting will be held at 7:30 PM on November 16th, most likely right here on the internet. Have a good night.
Thank you. This is to inform everyone that when I end the meeting, it will end for both those on and off screen and no other business will be conducted. Have a great night, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren.